Good evening. Welcome to this meeting of the Merrimack School Board this Monday evening, April 4th, 2016. Would you rise and join us for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. That will take us to item number two, approval of the March 21st, 2016 minutes. Motion made by Mr. Powell and seconded by Ms. Gualyumi. Any corrections? Mr. Schneider.
I found two, I think. Page two, at the bottom of the page, line, under question five at the very bottom, I think it's supposed to say, "Do you support having school?" There was a double negative in the question because the answer of no meant that people didn't want to have school on President's Day the week before, correct? That was the result. It was 75% wanted to continue to have school on that day and not because the week. It says, oh, okay, I guess it's right. It's weird word. "Do you support having no school on President's Day?" And the answer was no, so.
But that's incorrect.
I think it's backwards.
Yeah.
There's too many negatives in the question and answers, so.
Okay. So if we can just check the question and the result and then.
Anyway, it just, right. We just want people to take away that the support was not there to have it off. And then the second one is on page eight, on line 375. The final sentence says, "He suggested providing a link on the school district website," and it says, "To the town-created voter's guide," but actually what I think is, thought I said is, "Providing a link," I think it was, "to the school district website on the pamphlet." I think that's what I asked. I don't think I wanted to cross school to town.
Correct.
And that's it.
Great. Any other corrections? Mr. Marcus.
I had two on page four, line 173. It's textualism, not texturalism, so there shouldn't be an R. And then line 188, it's Shaheen, not Shehan. And then down on page nine, this one's small, line 439, I don't think there should be an apostrophe in superintendent's.
Great. Ms. Gualyumi.
Page two, line number 53, this is relating to a comment that Board Member Powell had made, and I think it's just simply a clarification that a friend in attendance remarked to him about the good behavior of the Merrimack High School fans. Or a friend also in attendance at that game remarked to him about the good behavior of the Merrimack High School fans rather than in attendance, let's say, at the board meeting, for example, if you're okay with that data.
He probably wasn't that clear.
Okay. Page three, line number 116, Board Member Gualyumi noted that the survey was very positively received and she recommended conducting them in the future around the calendar and other topics rather than more often. And then on page seven, and Shannon, you can correct, this one is regarding a comment that you had made. It says, "Vice Chair Barnes expressed concern about what is under the ground on the site," and I don't recall her expressing specific concern about under the ground, but rather just wanting to make sure that whatever it is is documented.
What I was saying was, I expressed concern about the ground on the site. So is it ledge? Is it, what material would anything be built on? So anything that would support that language is fine.
Okay.
Any others? I had just two more. On page seven, line 330, the line that says, "To build a new field costs," if we could say, "A new turf field costs," I think that would be clearer. And then lastly, on page nine, line 425, "And looking back at the history of the Merrimack School administration," should we say, "The Merrimack School District Administration," to be more clear? And that's all that I have. So with that, we will put the minutes to a vote. All those in favor of approving the March 21st, 2016 minutes as amended, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, none. The motion carries 5-0-0 and the student rep's opinion.
In favor.
Thank you, sir. And that will now take us to item number three, public participation. This is an opportunity for the public to address the board. All we ask is that you come to the microphone, state your name and address for the record, and I'll go with it.
Davis Powell, School Board Seat Number Three.
Your address, please?
School Board Seat Number Three.
Oh, okay.
For this purpose, School Board Seat Number Three. I'm going to see if I can't get through this without getting choked up this evening. Mr. Ortega, we'd like to thank you, and when I say "we," I mean myself, the board, and our student representative, for your service to the school board these past six years and five years as a chair. And I believe you were on the Budget Committee three years prior to that. So many years you've given to the district, and we thank you for that. And as a small token of our appreciation, the board and the student representative, we'd like to present you.
I'll just say that it's been an honor and a privilege to serve, but as well, an honor and privilege to serve with the people that I have. So, thank you.
Thank you. Ken, did we get the right color?
Absolutely wonderful. I love the Merrimack town. Beautiful. Very thin.
I wonder if I should wear it for the remainder of the meeting. Would that be appropriate?
No, you might pass out from the pee.
It's a wonderful gift. Thank you.
Thank you.
And so we will now awkwardly continue public participation.
If I get to follow that. Michael Thompson, 99 Joppa Road. I'm here tonight to talk about the PFOAs and the water for the district. First, I'd like to thank the school district for being proactive and testing the water at all of the schools, so thank you very much for that. I would like some additional clarification maybe to be shared with the town citizens about which schools might be on town water versus which ones might be on well water. I'm not sure if they're just all on town water or not. And I understand that the state has provided a level of 100 parts per trillion as a standard level. I would like to actually ask the school district to adopt a zero tolerance of the PFOAs and other PFCs. I'd like to share with the board the effects of PFOAs on vaccine effectiveness. A study has been done by the Harvard TH Chan School of Public Health from 2012, which shows exposure to PFCs was associated with lower antibody responses to immunizations and increased risk of antibody levels in children lower than those needed to provide long-term protection. And I have this paperwork that I'll actually share with the school board to be able to study that themselves. Also included in documents showed is a case where federal government called for lowering fluoride levels in drinking water. And not directly related, but what it shows is that the federal government has actually come out with levels as what should be appropriate and then come back and actually stated to lower them even more, which obviously they're saying 100 parts per trillion right now. Who knows if it might go to the levels which Vermont is giving, which is 20, or New Jersey, which is giving 40. So with that, the initial recommendations may be inaccurate, and that backs that need to have adopted a zero tolerance for the PFOAs for our children in our school districts. So that's all I'd like to say, and thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Thompson. We'll pass them down. Thank you. See? Everyone brought gifts. Is there anyone else looking to address the board under public participation? Okay. Seeing none, we will close public participation and move to item number four, the consent agenda. Dr. Mark McLaughlin.
Thank you. On consent agenda tonight are the following: teacher retirements. Robert Yvonne, science teacher at Merrimack Middle School. Tracy Wyman, librarian at Master Cola Elementary School. Diane Makin, language arts coordinator at Reed's Ferry Elementary School. Joanne Wegman, art teacher at Merrimack High School. Barbara Stekovich, social studies teacher at Merrimack High School. Kimberly Meyer, special educator at Merrimack High School. And in addition, there is a nurse resignation, Kim Morgan, nurse at Reed's Ferry Elementary School.
Thank you, Dr. McLaughlin. Vice Chair Barnes.
I'd like to accept the consent agenda as presented.
Thank you. And a second, I saw a bunch of hands, Mr. Powell, seconded by Mr. Powell. All those in favor of accepting the consent agenda as presented signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed, none. The motion carries 5-0-0. And I would just note that there are some names in here. All of these names are impressive educators who've given a lot of service to the district, and we thank them for that service. Now we will move to item number five, Merrimack High School, a year in review. I would invite to the table Principal Ken Johnson and Assistant Principals Mr. Zampieri and Mr. Bergeron, and they are attended as well in technical support and probably more by Mr. Mark Maryfield. Welcome.
Well, thank you, and thank you, Chris. And speaking for the administrative team, Mr. Zampieri and Mr. Bergeron, I just want to take a moment to thank the board for providing us with the opportunity to offer you a highlight report for 2015-16. We believe that there will be much more to celebrate as we move towards spring break into May and ultimately wrap up in June. We also want to thank the community for the support it has shown to our teachers and to the administration and for the great kids that they send us each day. And finally, a very special thank you to the eighth grade parents who we welcomed to the high school just last week. We had set up 250 chairs, only to have to pull out 50 more to accommodate the crowd. And still, there were some who remained standing. And I think this speaks well of the middle school administration, Mr. Carragher and Mr. Moore, and especially of an invested group of parents. As for our report, at its conclusion, you may very well find it exhaustive, but for us, either by intention or by omission, we can only say that we could have included much, much more tonight. So we start with the end, and we start with the highlights, and of course, our motto, "Believe, Go Forward, and Inspire," which has become our mission. I think we're the only school that has made its motto its mission. And if we can just flip that on the board very quickly, note that just about everything that's going to happen tonight, you're going to be able to find on our website. And if you could scroll right through the motto. Believe, go forward, and inspire. It's one of the things that truly makes us unique as a school, and we're going to be using the mission to present tonight. So what we thought we would do is to do what we always do, and that's to put kids first. And we're going to ask these kids to come to the microphone unscripted and tell us perhaps what has inspired them to do what they've done, or for that matter, what they plan to do. So if you guys would, assemble here by the microphone in whatever order you choose. You know, you've got about a minute to speak concisely to the members of the board, and I cannot wait to hear what they have to say.
My name's Erica Lane, and so I guess going to talk about what inspired me to make the choices I like made for next year. And next year, I am going to study writing for film and TV, probably at Northeastern or BU, I'm not sure yet. And a lot of things really led me to that place. Definitely the English education I received and then the art education as well. Ms. Wegman in particular had a huge impact on me as I took her classes because she really gave me the opportunity to kind of make my own important choices about my work and just really discover that I can be an independent artist, and that's definitely something I want to pursue going forward. And as well, sorry, public speaking was another huge class that impacted me. Mrs. Dutton, like, I would not even be up here speaking if it wasn't for her. I hated talking in front of people, and just that class really changed me. And it led me to participate in the Rotary Competition, which it took place on January 14th for the school. And I moved on to the next level, which actually took place yesterday. And I did not move on to the final four, but I had a great time getting to know all the contestants. We had a really fun time. We were down there for like hours, but we just, we all got along and were really supportive of each other. And I just learned a lot throughout the process, how much I really actually love public speaking, and it definitely led me down the path of communications and what I want to do, so.
Erica, can I ask you what the topic of your speech was?
Mental illness.
Excellent. Thank you. Very appropriate. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
My name is Riley Clark, and before I begin, I just want to thank everyone on the school board, the administration, and all the students that I've had the pleasure of meeting throughout my time here at Merrimack High School and have made me who I am today. So thank you all. So my name is Riley, and next year, it's been a long process. I applied to West Point, and unfortunately, I was fully qualified but did not get in. And next year, I will be attending Norwich University in Vermont on a full Army ROTC scholarship for four years. And thank you. So my process going through high school and becoming who I am today and wanting to join the military has been all the way through my entire schooling here in Merrimack. I can't even begin to describe what I do in the school because there's so many things I feel like I'm involved with that it's kind of hard to put it all together. Some of my most notable things that I'm most proud about and I feel like have been the biggest impact on me is being a student council member for the years in high school, and I'm the vice president now. I've been the vice president of National Honor Society this year. And when all of these come together, I feel like the main message that I get and I hope to give to the people is that there is an idea of service in our community at Merrimack High School that is not prevalent in other places. And Mr. Johnson has made this very clear as his time, that I've had him as a principal, that service should not be something that you're required to do. It should be something that you want to do. And I've taken that to heart, and Mr. Johnson has inspired me and all the administrators. And not only do I want to help out the community and the school, and I've given the opportunities at the school to be able to do that, but with my passions going forward, I really hope to do that for the country and for everyone here. So thank you.
Thank you.
First, I'd like to thank you all for letting me speak on behalf of MHS, including Mr. Johnson. He invited me yesterday. I come down here tonight. I haven't been involved in as many things as some of the other people, but one thing, a couple of things that I have been involved. The automotive shop, we're very lucky to have. Van a car retiring was obviously an upsetting moment for some people. Mr. Polly, the replacement teacher for the automotive shop, is a great teacher. Between the two of them, I've learned most of what I know about cars now. One of the biggest teachers that impacted my high school career, probably Mr. Carl. He's the wood shop teacher at Merrimack High School. He's taught everything that I've learned to know about any kind of woodworking or anything in that area. And I would like to thank Mr. Johnson for letting me talk tonight. My career at Merrimack High School for years has been very interesting. I've always struggled with English. I've made it through, and this year's been a very changing year for me. I actually take Mrs. Johnson's English class, and she's definitely shown me a lot and taught me how interesting English actually is. So I plan to go to school for law enforcement after I get out of high school. I want to take a two-year, four-year program to become a police officer, hopefully even here in Merrimack, just to help serve my country.
Excellent, Matt. Thank you very much. Excellent.
I'm Hayden Faust. I'd like to thank the administration for inviting me here tonight and for bringing a microphone that accommodates all of my height. So I've senior at Merrimack High School, and I've had a very good and a very changing experience at MHS. I started out my freshman and my sophomore year. They were a little rough for me. I didn't do too well grades-wise because I really didn't know what I wanted to do. But around the end of my sophomore year, the beginning of my junior year, I got some really good teachers, and they had some people come in from the Navy to speak to us at kind of a miniature job fair. And it was a specific moment I remember at the end of my sophomore year where someone from the Navy spoke to us and I decided I want to go into the Navy and be a nuclear engineer. And from then on, I presented this goal to a lot of my teachers, to people in my life, people at MHS. And they really helped me. I got a lot of encouragement, just a lot of help, and just a lot of knowledge about my specific interests from a lot of my teachers, to name a few by name. My current physics teacher, my physics teacher last year, who really helped enable me to kind of research my interest in nuclear engineering, Dr. Woncha, is a great teacher. And I've been able to do a lot at MHS thanks to them. I built a memorial down in Berens Park for Merrimack World War II veterans, and for the ceremony, a lot of people from Merrimack showed up, a lot of my friends. I invited all my teachers. A few of them showed up. It was wonderful. And even then, I had to miss some time from school to work on the project. I took, I think, two days off to actually go down there and build it, and my teachers were very understanding. You know, they encouraged me. They were happy to see me do it. And so I got a lot of kind, encouraging words from them, which was just wonderful to see. So now, looking forward, obviously, we're about to graduate, and I'm looking at going into the Navy. I did get, I did not get accepted to the Naval Academy, even though I did apply. But right now, I'm looking at a few other, I've been accepted to a few other very nice military schools because, I know it's strange for a teenager, but I love discipline, so I'm looking into, currently have been accepted to Norwich, VMI, and the Citadel. I'm looking at those three schools. They're all wonderful, and I plan on pursuing mechanical engineering and further than that, a career most likely in the Navy as a nuclear engineer. And I'll always remember my time at MHS and how it helped me find this goal and has helped me pursue it so far. So thank you very much.
Excellent. Thank you, Hayden.
My name is Phoenix Stopero. I'm a senior at Merrimack High School. I know Mr. Johnson said this was unscripted, but I did actually write a little something to share with you guys. So this past Christmas, I received the best gift I could possibly imagine when I received an offer of an appointment to the United States Naval Academy. Tonight, I would like to share why I have chosen to attend the Naval Academy. The Naval Academy is a military school committed to academics as much as anything else that it practices. At the academy, I will be able to learn and practice applied mathematics and engineering in a state-of-the-art facilities with access to top-tier professors in the country. A rigorous academic schedule will prepare me for five years of a guaranteed job after college. I hope to use this learning experience to turn that five-year job into a military career as a commissioned officer. As an officer, leadership will be an everyday requirement of life. To me, leadership has always been about being able to make the right decision, even under the most challenging of circumstances. For example, based on the opinion of followers, the situation at hand, and personal feelings, a leader must be able to make the right decision and support it. As a young leader, I want to incorporate loyalty, integrity, and respect into my own decision-making process. I believe attending the Naval Academy will give me the opportunity to fulfill my potential as an individual citizen, contributing to society as a person of good moral character, and hopefully in the future, become a long-term military leader I want to be and, more importantly, that I know I can become. Thank you.
Excellent, Phoenix. Thank you.
Thank you for allowing me to speak. My name is Neil Donaraj, and I'm a senior at Merrimack High School. So for those who didn't know, I didn't attend Merrimack High School during my freshman year, and I actually went to the Academy of Science and Design. And after my freshman year, I decided to move to Merrimack High School, and I can honestly say it's been one of the best decisions of my life. So my sophomore and junior year, I had the most wonderful science teachers, English teachers who supported me and helped develop my character, and they taught me a lot of things, and I learned a lot. I'm also an Eagle Scout, and Boy Scouts is another thing that has taught me a lot of things, and I've learned a lot from that, too. I've learned how to give leadership, give service to others. And for my teachers, I've learned their knowledge, basically. And I've combined that, and senior year, I made it my goal to give it back to others. And I especially want to thank my teachers, especially Mr. Davis and Mr. Mueller, who've helped me go forward. And this year, Mr. Davis actually gave me the opportunity to teach science at the elementary school. And at first, I was, I would be like, oh, that's a really hard challenge, but at the end of this year, teaching first graders is really hard. That's the conclusion I've made. But the service I gave back to the Merrimack Elementary School, the stuff that I learned I gave back, it's really made me feel a lot better about myself, and it's certainly something that after I attend college, I would love to come back to Merrimack and again, give that same kind of service and share my knowledge that I've received. Also, my teachers have definitely allowed me to get different awards and different recognitions. One of those is I recently got to visit Washington DC and represent the entire Boy Scouts of America and meet the president. He's a really nice guy. Gave us a few fist bumps. It's really cool. I can honestly say that all these achievements that I have done is because of my teachers at Merrimack High School. Without them, I would not be at the place I am today. So currently, I'm looking at different engineering schools, WPI, UMass, Amherst. Both give me really good scholarships, and I want to pursue mechanical engineering, and I hope one day I'll come back to Merrimack and give back. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Neil. Excellent.
My name is Tia Gomont. Thank you for giving me the opportunity to come back and talk to you again this year. I'm a senior at the high school, and in addition to being involved at Merrimack High School, I also attend Alveron High School for their Air Force Junior ROTC program. I'm in my fourth year there. Last year, when I spoke to you, I was the chief master sergeant of my grade, putting me as the top junior, and I was given the opportunity this year to be the group commander. And that was the first time since the program opened in 2003 that an out-of-district student had become a group commander, which was an incredible opportunity. I got to do some really cool things this year. I planned and executed a four-day summer leadership school in collaboration with Spalding High School and Salem High School. We took a five-day Washington DC trip that was all planned and run. We got to meet our congressional reps. We got to tour the Pentagon. It was really, really cool. Our military ball's on Saturday that we were planning and hosting. And I also got to solo in an airplane through a scholarship I received over the summer through the Order of the Dedalians. And all of this was possible because when I transferred back from the Academy of Science and Design in my sophomore year, I was able to continue with the vocational program, which isn't normally allowed. Merrimack has been nothing but supportive in everything I do. Mr. Johnson, Mr. Delude, Mrs. Bates, Mr. Susie, they all came to my change of command last year and watched as I got leadership of the unit, which, thank you. Mr. Delude wrote a really, really nice college recommendation for me as well as for the school I'm going to. And I just have to say that Alveron has been talking about moving. Um, and I just have to say that Alveron has been talking about moving their junior ROTC unit towards their CTE wing. Which means that students would no longer be financially responsible for paying the cost. Um, my family personally pays my transportation and my tuition fees. Um, in the future, if it does fall under the CTE wing, that wouldn't have to be a student burden. And there's already transportation going over to the school. And I don't know if you can tell, there's a clear military interest at the school, which I think is great. Um, and that would be a really good opportunity to explore in the future if and when the CTE wing, uh, does accept J-Ratsi under it. Uh, next year, I plan to attend the United States Air Force Academy. Um, I've accepted an appointment. I plan to major in aeronautical engineering and I hope to commission as a pilot. So, thank you for all the great opportunities that Merrimack High School has given me, I wouldn't have gotten to where I am today without it. And I look forward to serving my country and coming back and serving the community.
Thank you so much, Tia.
Hello, my name is Christopher Frank, I'm a freshman. Just a little more than a year ago, I moved here from Indiana. And I have to say, I've been very pleased with what's to offer here. The Merrimack School District's been great, I love the middle school and the high schools even better. Just last Saturday, I was given the great opportunity to go to states with my NHD project and I got third. I know Merrimack actually led all schools in amount of overall wins or first, second, third placements. So, the history department's one of the best in state. I know many good teachers, Ms. Hartman, Ms. PC, who have been like, great just mentors of history that have really encouraged me in that field. I don't know my future much because I'm just a freshman, but history is a field I would be definitely willing to go to.
Christopher, could you tell us what the, the topic of your project was?
None of you know it, but it was the Arctic Balloon Expedition of eighteen ninety-seven.
And what, what inspired you, because I remember seeing that exhibit, I believe I have a photo of it tonight, what inspired you to choose that particular project?
Damninteresting.com.
There you go. You're gonna love it. It was excellent.
I know I want to go into student council next year, hopefully I'll be able to get like an officer position. I'm trying to get into English honors. I love English too. Cludier, she's an interesting teacher. I know Mariota, she was a good teacher, and I'll be sad to see Yvonne go.
Well, thank you, and thank you for traveling out here from Indiana and settling in New Hampshire, it's great to have you on board. Thank you very much, Christopher.
Uh, hello, my name is Mats Patel. Um, this, in summary, this four years has been amazing, and specifically this past year. I never would have expected that I'd have so many opportunities, um. But it's all been because of the amazing administration, Mr. Johnson, Mrs. Chaffrey especially. And a big shout-out to the Science Department, Mr. Davis, um, for all the amazing help. Um, so last summer, um, myself and two of my friends, one of which is here, Phoenix, we attended the, um, Advanced Studies Program at St. Paul's School. Um, it's a very prestigious program to get into. Um, and I was very honored when out of the two-hundred-and-seventy participants, I was selected as the single ranking scholar of the program. Um, and I felt, you know, very proud being from Merrimack, because normally it's, you know, all the big-name private schools or winning things like that, so it was a very proud moment for me and I was glad to be able to represent Merrimack. And I'm happy to say that this year, we had, I believe, five students be accepted to the, uh, ASP. Um, which is, I believe, the highest that Merrimack has ever had. Um, I've done a lot of work trying to give back to the STEM education program here in Merrimack. I myself benefited from, uh, Mr. Pym, who was amazing, um, through all the gateway programs actually, um, and through the first Lego League program. Um, unfortunately, we did not have a program at our middle school, um, a few years ago, so I decided to step up and coach the team myself. Um, my team this year did very well, we proceeded to the New Hampshire Championship Event and I was recognized as the New Hampshire Mentor of the Year. Um, also, also with Phoenix, uh, we started a math club at the middle school. And this spring, I'm going to be pioneering a STEM club at the middle school to get kids ready for the, uh, Chop Shop Robotics Team. Um, possibly my biggest involvement recently has been owning my own company called, uh, Chemicube. It came up through the inspiration of my teachers, Mr. Mueller, Dr. Campbell, Mr. Davis. Um, over the course of the summer, I developed an idea for a chemical pumping system to help teachers dispense chemicals in chemistry rooms. And with their help and guidance and many connections that Mrs. Chaffrey and Mr. Johnson have provided me, um, I have been able to grow it into an actual business, it is a limited liability corporation. And I am selling units to all kinds of schools in the area. Um, I brought that research to the New Hampshire Science and Engineering Expo with Sarah, who we'll talk in a second. Um, and we did very well, we placed first place in engineering, second place overall in the expo, which will qualify us to go to the Intel International Science and Engineering Fair in Phoenix, Arizona, and this is the first time that Merrimack will ever be represented at either one of those fairs, so that was also very rewarding. Um, looking to the future, uh, it's been a long path, my s- my number-one school since I could, since as long as I can remember was MIT. Uh, and I've been placed on their waitlist of about three-hundred kids, so I'm waiting to hear back of whether they held room for me. Uh, but currently, I'm enrolled in Carnegie Mellon University, which was a very close second. Um, so I'm very happy to be going there. Uh, I'm looking forward to graduation and being able to address the class as the valedictorian of the class of twenty sixteen. And, um, I just wanted to thank all the people here because these are my friends and I couldn't have done it without them. And it's been amazing, thank you.
Thank you, Matt.
Um, I'm Sarah Mason, Matt mentioned me, I had the opportunity to go with him to the New Hampshire Expo and will be going with him to Phoenix, and that is an incredible opportunity. Since freshman year with Mr. Davis, I've been so interested in the sciences and I had Mr. Mueller for chemistry and I have Dr. C now, and they have inspired me to go on and pursue a PhD in chemistry. And I would like to teach, I believe, it's still kind of a question, but they had such an instrumental part in helping me figure out what I want to do after high school that I would love to be able to give back to students in the future like they did to me. Um, I would also like to shout out Mrs. LP because I have the opportunity to be a SAD officer this year and SAD is an incredible club, I wish I had joined it sooner. We do so much more than I ever realized before being an officer. And LP is an amazing advisor, the club has really helped me step out of my comfort zone. A couple of the guys here participated in Mr. MHS, Riley, thinking of Mr. MHS, I guess. And they just, they really helped me step out of my box. And Merrimack High School has been such an incredible experience for me and I'm just very grateful.
Thank you very much.
And then, my name is Jacob Marcus, in case you didn't know, but, uh, after-
Seat number six.
But I'm not lucky enough to have a sixth term, or a six-year-long tenure. But after a science-heavy, uh, presentation, I just wanted to talk a bit more about the Social Studies Department in the school district because as you guys know, I am very passionate about politics and also about history, economics, less so about economics, but definitely politics and history. And I, when Mr. Johnson had told us to talk about what inspired us to make the choices, I started out just thinking about high school, but then I realized that in fifth grade, my teacher was Ms. Richards. And she was, to date, one of my favorite teachers and she she taught social studies for me and my partner class, I don't remember what they're called, but, the PLT. But she was a great history teacher and she, in addition to telling us about the dates and the names and what happens and why it's important, she taught us why every, why it was so important and why we need to study history. And I think that that's what really started my interest. And then Mr. Haverne in seventh grade, he taught world history, followed by Mrs. Deneut in eighth grade, who was another one of my favorite teachers. She was, she was the one that initially got me interested in politics. I remember that was, the eighth grade was when the twenty-twelve primaries were going on, the Republican primaries. And she always kept us updated on what was going on. And she also talked about the writing of the Constitution, the Articles of Confederation and that was what, that was when I started to realize that this is what I'm interested in and this is what I want to pursue. And then coming to the high school, it was just incredible because every opportunity to begin with, the administration and your teachers present you with a vast number of opportunities, but then any other opportunity you can find yourself, you, you're always, you always have the full support of the administration and your teachers behind you. Like, while Matt and Sarah were talking with their Chemicube, for example, they received funding and help for that. And then with my, the US Senate Youth Program, Mr. Johnson wrote my letter of recommendation and he was the one that nominated me to the selection process that Ms., the level at which Ms. Temple reviews everything. And then some of the teachers, you, civics is a mandatory class and I think it is the most important class because whether you are going into the military or the sciences, or you want to be a history teacher, you are always affected by our government. And being an informed voter is one of the most important choices you can make every other year. And the teachers in the Social Studies Department really understand that. Mr. Knight, who gave me a very thorough civics curriculum such that now that I'm an AP government, I, the information isn't all that much different. Uh, Mr. Wojewoda, who taught politics and AP, AP US history. He was always ready to debate with his students, to make you think about other ideas, to make sure that you weren't too set in your ways, and we agreed on a lot of stuff, so I suppose we didn't always debate so much as agree, but other students for sure. And now, this year with Mr. Huckins as the new department head. And even teachers not in the Social Studies Wing, uh, Mr. Manny Otis, who is my AP English teacher and a wild romantic. He always talks to me after class about why it's important to remember the truth and beauty that politics seeks to attain. Uh, Dr. Woncha, who teaches AP Physics, which is, you would think as removed from politics as possible, but she offers an extremely interesting perspective about her experiences in Romania in the twentieth century. And she has always challenged me to avoid idealism, whereas Mr. Mann encourages idealism. So, it's an interesting dichotomy and the teachers, regardless of the subject, although I talk mostly about the social studies, they are always ready to broaden your perspective and challenge you to consider new ideas. And as someone who wants to go into politics, that's the most important thing because if any of you have ever watched the news, even once, you know that people are too set in their ways and that's one of the major problems we're facing as a nation. And then with regards to the future, I am probably going to go to either Boston College, Catholic University, or Holy Cross, I'm waiting to hear back from financial aid from two of them. And I want to study politics and economics and then come back to New Hampshire. And on a final note, I wanted to thank the board members because this position, which I would, there's no one in student council that won't be graduating, but I would highly recommend it. Because you get to see politics on a state level, as opposed, actually, not even a state level, at the locality. Which is something that I think gets lost in presidential election years especially, but all the time. And I wanted to thank you guys because your tireless work doesn't make it onto the news all the time, but unless you do something really bad. But, your work doesn't always make it onto the news, but-
We try to avoid that.
This past, these past months have been very insightful and have shaped, for sure, how I want to pursue my dreams.
Thank you so much, Christopher. So, what we wanted to afford you to open, uh, was just a glimpse of something that we get to see every day. And it's hard to believe that we have about a thousand-two-hundred of those kids in our building. So again, many thanks to those parents who keep sending them. And, uh, really remarkable articulation on the part of each and every person who came forward to the microphone tonight. And thank you for coming out during such inclement weather. Very well spoken and you really represented your school and your class and your families and, and your community exceptionally well. So I want to thank each and every one of you and also want to thank so many of the department chairs who came out here to support our presentation tonight. And I, I will grant you, there is some length and there is some depth to this, but bear with me, as I said, uh, I'm trying to encapsulate, uh, as best I can, uh, what our high school is all about. Something new this year, I call it reaching out, and I just, this is really kind of a commercial for parents out there. Uh, I've talked to several parents in the last couple of years that we want to know ultimately what their kids are doing once they leave Merrimack High School. And so, we're just starting to send out little messages through parents to give us some feedback. And, uh, just yesterday, we got two back, so we thought, let's post these up here. So here you have a student by the name of Elias Kim, graduated two thousand twelve. And while there's no need to go into great depth on the biography, you see he's attending Harvard Law School this fall. And there he talks, much like these students just did, about those things that inspired him to do what he is doing today. Speaks of his, um, uh, work with the Science Olympiad and speaks very, very highly of his English teachers. Again, a couple commencements ago, in fact, the last one I spoke at, I talked about MHS being my home sometimes. It's nice to see, um, these kids come back and so many of them come back during breaks in the spring. And I have so many good things to say about the town and the community and their teachers. So, somewhere down the line, we're going to try to make this a feature of what we do. Uh, so there's a young man from two thousand twelve and just another one that came in yesterday was Ashley Marion Jones. Uh, she was a graduate two thousand ten. And she talked about how she's going to go, uh, to work in Science Communications for the EPA in Arlington. And there again, uh, kind of a theme tonight, she talks a lot about, uh, science, um, some of the electives she took, her work, uh, in English classes that have inspired her to do things that were absolutely beyond what she thought she was capable of when she was at MHS. So just two samples of, uh, information we got back just the other day. And again, reaching out tonight to parents, let us know what your kids are doing, we'd really like to hear it and maybe we'll, we'll find a place in the high school where we can feature that. So, as we begin our formal presentation and that lovely end that you saw on Mr. Ortega's jacket, uh, we, we really focus on the mission and this part of the mission focuses on intellectual potential. Uh, as in the years past, we continue to participate in the New Hampshire Scholars Program and you can see that our numbers are starting to skyrocket. We currently have one-hundred-and-forty-five, uh, seniors in the program. Um, enough to make any school proud. We were the first of the Class L or large schools to get on board with the New Hampshire Scholars Program and kids have definitely bought into that. It really tries to attract kids in the middle of the academic pack and stretch them. It's been one of our most successful programs. In addition, uh, you'll see that, and you know, that we continue to offer more and more advanced placement courses for our kids. And you'll see that we are only one of three districts in the state of New Hampshire that has won the annual AP Honor Roll Award. That is a national award and it's given to schools that have increased the number of AP classes they offer. More kids have to be taking those classes and more and more kids have to continue to sc- uh, score at a higher rate. And that is what is happening at Merrimack High School. Some other stats here about advanced placement. You'll see that we have a hundred-and-twenty-nine students currently registered to take AP exams. Next slot, top ten scholars, always something we like to feature, you know? Uh, and here they are, you've already seen Mats Patel, very clever, Matt, with the background, very, very clever, you gotta like that background. Uh, our next is Emily Devanna, she, I didn't call Emily to come tonight, but she'll have her chance to speak at commencement, she's absolutely wonderful, she will serve as our salutatorian. Also in our top ten, uh, Shrovani Balaji, I think she's got some pretty big news coming somewhere about April sixth, but I can't spill the beans on that tonight, although I believe I already have. Uh, then we have Sarah House and Cameron Collins. Sarah Mason, who spoke tonight. Owen Bailey, Noah Bagelman, if you ever attended a, uh, a basketball game at MHS this year, you'll see in our senior section, the kids grab a bunch of bagels on the street and start cheering for Noah. And rounding out the top ten, Callie Dwyer and Phoenix- And rounding out the top ten, Kelly Dwyer and Phoenix, who also spoke this evening. Some of our other areas, we talked about the science department. Uh, I can highlight just a couple of things there. Our Science Olympiad did get knocked out of first place this year for the first time in seven years and they took a third by about half a point. But the undaunted, they will go forward and be successful again next year. Also want to highlight there at the bottom, you hear this connection a lot when the kids spoke tonight about combining disciplines. This year, as you know, we introduced several interdisciplinary courses. Sarah Campbell and Carolyn Rortum developed and taught the Art of Science interdisciplinary court. Uh, course, and then we have, uh, two rookies on the staff. And I think this says a lot, Liz Dodd and Connor Phelps, who developed the curriculum for the Project Earth interdisciplinary course. Again, I think when you hear our kids speak, they're putting more and more of these connections together, more and more disciplines together. Science department, again, Matt spoke, but you didn't get a chance to take a glimpse at the ChemiCube. That's it right there. A lot of people think he should go on Shark Tank. I think he would probably eat those people alive on Shark Tank, but, uh, ultimately that's his choice to make. But you'll see, uh, very humbly, he speaks to all those people, uh, who inspired him. Uh, and Sarah's role and also his teacher's role in inspiring him. Uh, again. They will be traveling, he and Sarah and also Sean Mueller will be traveling to the International Science Fair in Phoenix, Arizona to compete. You saw, uh, tonight Neil spoke. Uh, he also, I thought the coolest thing that, uh, that he spoke to, again, also remarkably humble. Was the fact that he went down and taught to the elementary schools and he talked about how challenging that could be, but look what he's teaching. Taught third graders about constellations and about magnets and fourth graders about energy, first graders about biomes. I won't ask anybody what a biome is right now. I don't want to embarrass anybody here, but he's just a remarkable kid. Who again speaks to all those things that we talk about. How many of those kids got up and not only talked about academics, but they talked about service, you know, and giving back. Also in the science department, I'm not allowed to say where we ended up, but I could just tell you that the Granite State Challenge Team did exceptionally. Well, this year and they will be featured on, uh, one of the final shows of the program. So that would be a big hint for those of you who participated, uh, on the Granite State Challenge Program. In the math department, we highlight a couple of things there as well, but again, I think this is a neat piece. You saw two students who came back and gave back to Merrimack High School. We have up here Ben Grenier from the class of two thousand eleven, who actually hosted an in-school field trip. Uh, to meet with Microsoft, uh, Microsoft engineers and to discuss, uh, computer programming as a career. He brought those individuals in to speak to our kids, again, willing to come back to us high school, which I think is a pretty, pretty cool thing. Business department, I guess the thing I would focus on there is that we have now, uh, a few developing dual enrollment, uh, courses through SNU. One of them is Accounting Three. The other continues to be a very popular course, the Introduction to Sport and Events Management. But also notice that Marketing Two is now being offered as a running start program through NHCC. Also in the business department, a highlight there would be John Borey, was actually offered a permanent position. At the Granite State Credit Union as a result of his work in our business department. Continuing on with business department, the highlight there I'd have to say would be Rachel Easley, who was selected as the New Hampshire State DECA Officer. For the two thousand sixteen seventeen school year and on our competition had over seventeen medal winners. And you'll see some familiar names listed there of whom we've already spoken. Also on the next slide, uh, continuing with rigorous curriculum, these are some of the new courses that we introduced through social studies and English. The Foundations in World Culture, the American Experience, AP Language and Composition. And Culture Shock, which focuses on social science and literature. Uh, the English department, again, we can feature that, we could talk about their, the, the, the new HAWK program and someone's already addressed. Erica just, uh, expressed her thanks for the public speaking program, but also the course that's becoming very, very popular. As you showed on that next slide, is that course called the American Experience. Again, an interdisciplinary course, uh, these kids put on a MOC, uh, eighteen ninety-three World's Fair. And once again, notice what they did. It wasn't just open exclusively to high school students. But they invited, uh, kids from the fifth and sixth grade to come up and visit the fair. Kaylee Jean, I was hoping Kaylee could come out tonight. I think inclement weather prohibited her from coming out, but this is worth reading right off the script. Um, she is a junior honor student in the American Experience interdisciplinary course. Kaylee won the local, district and state levels of the Voice of Democracy Speech Contest, which was sponsored by the Veterans of Foreign Wars. Kaylee, her parents and her teacher were ultimately honored on a celebratory banquet in January. Where they learned of her state win and her trip to Washington DC, where she then competed at the national level. Remarkable kid. And we already spoke about Erica Lane, uh, who told us tonight about, uh, her work and. Her plans, uh, and her success really, this past Sunday and her plans for the future. If you look at the social studies department, again, we're talking about curriculum and that's what this whole section is about. The rigorous curriculum that we offer, these are courses that we just introduced in two thousand fifteen, sixteen. The AP Economics, AP American Government and Politics, World Studies, Sociology and Contemporary Issues. Along with the three interdisciplinary courses again, that we've mentioned, I have to give a lot of credit for that. To Robert Huckins, our new social studies department chair and how well he has worked with Jan Moynihan Cooney in the English Department. Along with the, uh, interdisciplinary courses, they had these authentic assessments. Um, I'm looking at, uh, AP World, Project Earth, you have the one with the pictures on the MHS World Fair, is it the next one up? And these are just some pictures, uh, of kids who came out and to view the World's Fair in the gym. You can keep moving on that one. Okay, over two dozen Merrimack High School students attended the state meet for National History Day on April second, competing in different categories. And I think you heard probably overall, we were the number one medal winners in the state. These are the number of people who participated in National History Day. You can see all the first place winners that we had in state competition. Just take a glance at that and again, this will all be available to you online. Some additional pictures of their projects. More pictures of the team. Okay. We also had in the tech ed department, um, it was Phil Carl, who hosted the Granite State Woodturners for the Hands-on Lay Attorney Experience. I happened to be there for that. It was absolutely remarkable and I believe the person who was featured in the picture. Uh, while his name escapes me, was a Merrimack High School student. Who returned, uh, to demonstrate his talents and a mentor for other students. We have the Chop Shop, I hear a little cheer back there in the audience, we have the Chop Chop Success. You know, this is not the first time that they have won the two thousand sixteen Chairman's Award. And basically that, what that speaks to is not only talent, but far more than that, it speaks to their character. Uh, because these are, uh, kids who as they say best, uh, represents a model for other teams to emulate. And best embodies the purpose of first. And when you win that award, it's such, it's like, it's like the gold medal. When you win that award, that is an automatic to the next level of competition. And that is just an absolutely remarkable achievement because more so than just talent. We're talking a lot tonight about the character of the kids who come to MHS. We never want to exclude, uh, that rigor, uh, is not limited to simply core courses. We also have tremendous rigor and success in the MHS Theater Program. Uh, here you see some pictures from, uh, their Our Town Production, their Evening One Acts. They too have gone on to the regionals and participating in the New Hampshire Education and Theater Guild. Almost too much to say, you have the success of our band, uh. So I will highlight a couple of things that the concert band received an A rating from all four adjudicators at the New Hampshire Large Group Band Competition. And that eleven MHS musical students were selected for the several all-state musical ensembles. Picture of the band. Picture of the large group ensemble. Picture of the jazz band. Okay, and also continuing along with the arts, if you have not had a chance to visit what we call the catwalk at the high school. We have yet another stained glass window and this, uh, uh, was prepared by Mrs. Carolyn Rortum. And her students, I believe that's the fourth window to go up. Her hope, her plan is to have, uh, all those windows covered on the catwalk. Uh, it is absolutely a beautiful prism, uh, if you have a chance to walk up in that area. Uh, remarkable, uh, work that she produces out of her glass class. So if you haven't had a chance, please come up and visit. It's one thing to see it here, it's another thing to see it in the light. And of course, if you would, art is all across our building and featured all across our building. Um, just continuing on with the thought of rigor, um. We have had another wonderful college fair and I, I raise that point because. We are now approaching ninety percent of Merrimack High School students who choose to go on to, um, uh, college. And you can also see tonight that that is affecting and in a positive way, the number of kids who are choosing to go into the military as officers. So I hope you're getting a sense tonight of a building that has been becoming intensely committed to academics and academic excellence. And also to service. And as I mentioned that, I noted that, or I will note. That we have three National Merit Scholarship semifinalists. And, uh, I know I've kind of already spilled the beans, I'm not allowed to say so, but I will. Uh, be saying as early as April sixth, that we actually have a national scholarship winner. At Merrimack High School, which is no easy task. I think that person knows who they already are. I won't do that. That would be the wrong thing to do. Regarding developing physical and emotional wellbeing, also part of our mission. Uh, we have pictures from this year's Challenge Day. We had Challenge Day for the incoming freshmen. Challenge Day for sophomores and juniors, and we had graduation Challenge Day. Which really I think pulled the senior class together. Probably the thing that stands out to be most. Is going the next day to a senior homeroom and having three kids jump up at me and say. In a most unselfish way, Mr. Johnson, you have got to make Challenge Day mandatory for incoming freshmen. And I thought to myself, what a remarkable statement. It wasn't, hey, Challenge Day was great. It was, it was so great, you need to make this mandatory for incoming freshmen. Kids they don't even know. Kids they won't even share the building with, which I think says a lot, uh, not only about the program. But says a lot about the kids and the outgoing seniors. There's a couple more pictures of Challenge Day. And the next thing I would just say is we talk about athletics. If anybody ever says that there's no spirit at the high school or teenagers just don't commit to things anymore, well, they haven't come to a basketball game. Or a football game at Merrimack High School. That's just, uh, I really wish you could see that close up. That is a packed, what we call student section. Uh, where these kids were just remarkable, um. We get more and more feedback from coaches, from the NHIAA, just saying, what a place to come and compete. This is what we're looking for and this is what it's all about. And really have to credit two, uh, seniors, one Dan Jaggett. And Sean Lyons for just inspiring people and connecting with them on social media. To come on what they call whiteout days or blackout days. So something else to look forward to. In athletics, I'd like to point out twenty-five, twenty-five of our students or student athletes. Were honored, uh, and conquered by Governor Hassan and to have received the honor that they did. Uh, they had to have been a participant in two varsity sports. And have at least a three point two, uh, CUMGPA. And be involved in various school and community projects. That in and of itself is pretty impressive. And the next slide, I feature MHS football, not just because they had a winning season and a successful season. But I'd actually like to jump all the way down to that next to last bullet. That under the leadership of Coach Kip Jackson, members of the MHS Football Program have performed six hundred hours plus. Of community service in the last eleven months. You know, Riley Clark, I think said it best. You know, there's for years during my time as principal, people said you really should compel, um, community service. To me, it's you build the spirit so the kids want to do it. And right now you can feel that spirit in the building and throughout the district. Um, so I wanted to focus on that. I point out the win in Exeter, which seems like, why would you point out one game? Well, I do so because as you jump to the next slide. And you, we mentioned community service, but this. That game was played, uh, in memory to Tim Gibson, who lost his life overseas while serving in the military. Uh, Exeter at the time was the number one football team in the state. And we were playing just above five hundred ball. And, uh, went into that night and I don't think there was a lot of hope realistically for victory. Not only did our kids play their hearts out in that game, but, uh, they kicked that winning field goal in the closing seconds as time kicked off the clock. And it just reminded you that some things were just meant to be. And one of the more remarkable moments in my fourteen years as principal at the high school. Um, continuing with athletics, you'll see, uh, in girls soccer, there were awards. You'll see that we had two coaches of the year this year. In boys soccer, Ryan Farnsworth, in hockey, uh, Matt Davis. You'll see again, honorable mention all-state and students who were rewarded for their academic achievements while participating in athletics. Jo Coffey was declared the New Hampshire Player of the Year and Gatorade Player of the Year and the Nashua Telegraph Player of the Year. First team all-state, first team all-telegraph team, Under Armour All-American nominee. And she has committed to SNU on a full, uh, volley, uh, volleyball scholarship. And again, talk about team play, it wasn't the number of kills that she had, it was actually the number of assists. And in old coaching terms, that means a person who is not only uniquely talented, but that she makes everybody else on the court look that much better. In ice hockey, there was also success. You can see that we had a couple of teams make the all-state awards and as I mentioned already. They made the semifinals and, uh, Coach Davis actually was awarded, uh, in what his second year as coach of the year. Girls cross country team was very successful. Notice the name of Bailey Carrillo, who finished twenty-first, earning a trip to the New England Championships in record time for Merrimack High School. Uh, in boys basketball, as you know, heartbreaker, but we did go to the championship as did three of our teams. Uh, we don't like to reflect upon that closing second in that moment when, uh, we thought we hit the three-point shot to win it. But again, I think it speaks, um, that it's not all about winning, but it can be about character. Because in that day, it wasn't just the, the most exciting game, as Coach Goodrich would say, one of the most exciting games he ever coached. It's also the character of our fans and the character of our players in the moment. Uh, Chase Sweeney in indoor track, you'll see was a state champion in the six hundred meter run. Again, it's, it's a school that definitely enjoys its athletics. You'll see there too, when we go to girls track and field. Bailey Carrillo picks up again, along with Charlotte Perry, Kelly Dwyer and Ms. Wright. Just a remarkable group of girls and again, D-one records sent. I'll end really with social stewardship, which we've heard a lot about tonight at the school. And talk specifically about the Merrimack Cares Project, which we launched last year with the class of two thousand fifteen. Um, you'll see there what I think people think typically of, uh, community service. Kids helping out in the courtyards and kids helping out in town. Um, notice a few of the things they've done as we flip through the slides. I think this one is pretty powerful. Uh, working in the town of Merrimack, they're currently raising funds to enable ten Merrimack residents. Who are World War II veterans to take part in the Honor Flight Program. So if I could just focus on this one for a moment. So I asked these kids, what would you like to do to give back to the town as a part of the Merrimack Cares Project? And they huddled for a few days, they saw. And they huddled for a few days, they sorted out their ideas, and these teenage kids said, "We'd like to fundraise to take ten World War II veterans from Merrimack and engage them in the Honor Flight Program." It's a program that escorts veterans to Washington DC to visit the World War II Memorial. It's a one-day program that flies back and forth from Manchester to Reagan National Airport, costs four hundred and fifty dollars per veteran, and they are hoping to raise four thousand five hundred dollars in the program. It's, the key fundraiser there will be a family fun night on April twenty-first, and we hope that message gets out to the community, because that would be a great thing for our kids to do for the veterans. And please note, they also have a GoFundMe page that they can access. Merrimack Cares, these again, just kid volunteers who have already donated over two hundred meals to needy families in New Hampshire. They've also attended the Americor and Vista meetings in Manchester to observe national service, because they want to serve on the local, state, regional, and national level, and quite frankly, beyond. When I say beyond, I talk about David Vaccaro. Here's a young man who said, "I want to carry the spirit of Merrimack Cares across the continents. Mr. Johnson, I'm traveling to Africa, and I'll be proud to wear the Merrimack Cares shirt there." David just returned from Malawi, where he, he's working on helping to build a school for kids, providing them with desks and books and so on. He hopes to return with a team of Merrimack students to help build a roof on that school. Because if you look at the next slide, you'll see that they're making great progress. Just a remarkable kid and a remarkable family, but they need to put a roof on that facility. He's also talking about going beyond that and building a school for girls. Because in their culture, girls get educated at an early age, but then are often retired to more mundane things like cleaning the house and cooking, and their education stops. David engaged with several people down there to say, "That just doesn't have to be. We should build a school for girls." So that project is underway and inspired by a Merrimack kid, David Vaccaro. Empty Bowls Project, I don't know who the young man is over there to the right. I've never seen him before in my life, but I do know that this is a biannual project. The kids make these bowls, and then they go out amongst the town of Merrimack, and they solicit various soups and chilies to put in the bowls, and then fundraise for the Nashua Soup Kitchen. And I believe this year, they raised over three thousand dollars for the Merrimack Food Pantry. I mention this piece about the global society, because again, our kids are going global. And if you take a peek at some of the things that we're doing to keep that spirit going, you recall, some of you have the chance to come to the high school and see, or meet with a hundred and thirty students, and I believe it was eight staff from a school in South Korea. They liked their first visit. We invited them back again this year, and I think our inside joke is that they invited themselves back next year. So we found out that they were so excited, they told us they were coming back on October thirteenth. I want you to know, yeah, there you go, it's your birthday. I want you to know that their, the purpose of their initial tour was strictly to see the Ivy League schools in New England, but they wanted to visit a high school. And Natalie Kate, our math teacher, had a connection, and so they visited Merrimack High School. They loved it, they put on a cultural show, we reciprocated, and they would like to begin an exchange program with us, and invited us to their school at any time. Student travel will also continue this year. Lei Shui and Liz Farrell will be taking a group to China. They'll be traveling to Beijing, Xi'an, and Shanghai in just a couple of weeks, and never to be taken for granted. But Peter Petrino, who has been doing this annually, is taking a large number of students who will be going to Dublin, London, and Paris already this April. Very quickly, I always like to speak about goals for the future, because we need to be about continuous improvement. So as we look to goals for the future, next year, as we continue our academic rigor, we're going to be introducing a new comprehensive course level. Very quickly, I'll show you the graphics on that. Essentially, what it does is to combine what had been standard level with college prep into what we call comprehensive. It's a heterogeneous mix that we spoke to the eighth-grade parents night. It will impact the class of two thousand twenty-first, beginning in September of next year. Next slide. Essentially, not only does our own data tell us that this is best for kids, but national data tells us that this is the way to go as well. The key there in that slide is to point out that not only are we offering this new curriculum, but we are offering additional support through what we call the Summer Institute, as opposed to the traditional summer school, and that begins this June. The plan is to phase this in over four years, again, beginning with the incoming freshman class, but it does not impact students who are currently enrolled at MHS. Our goal and projected outcomes, more rigorous education for more students, increased support for struggling students, and increased heterogeneous grouping with inherent academic and social benefits. That is what national data tells us. And that the ultimate goal for the class of two thousand twenty is to put an end to what we call the Certificate of Completion, but instead, those students behind me will be, have met the graduation requirements, and therefore, those will be the students participating in the graduation ceremony, and we're looking for a hundred percent participation. This is what we're offering to the incoming freshmen. You can view that slide later. This is what we traditionally offer. This is what we hope to offer in upcoming years. And this is our current schedule for parents who are interested. It's a six-week program. It goes from eight to twelve-thirty, respecting their weekends. It's a Monday through Thursday and not a Friday project. Two sessions per day, which means students can take two classes, and it will give them a total of fifty-two hours of class time per course. Probably the most comprehensive endeavor we've gone through, I think, in these past three years in terms of curriculum. If you have an incoming freshman, I would be really, really excited. And of course, as I say, look to the future. We have the Top Ten Dinner sponsored by The Rotary on May nineteenth, the Junior Prom on May twentieth, Spirit Week on May twenty-third to twenty-seventh, a little later this year. We hope every member of the board can make it to Awards Night on June first, and Senior Week Activities, which will include the traditional trip to Six Flags, the Senior Semi, yeah, a little woo in the background. Feel like I'm at a, feel like I'm at a Bruins game. And a commencement on a sunny, warm Saturday on the eleventh, where we hope to see this picture. There it is. Believe, Go Forward and Inspire, Class of two thousand sixteen, and their message, "Go big or go home." And they, once again, the fifth straight class to choose the blue and white beach ball. So it is truly a part of our tradition. So that's our presentation. I know that was exhaustive, I know that was a lot of material, but I would tell you, what I left on the floor and back in the office was more than what you saw tonight. So, thank you very much.
Thank you. Any comments or questions from the board? Mr. Schneider.
Well, and, you know, every year, you overwhelm us, and you brought it up to the next level again, which is great, you know, having the kids come was good. My only comment was, is for seat number six down at the end here, you made a comment that said that you try to inspire people to be involved in government at least every other year. But you see, you made that comment, I wrote it down, see? You're sitting at a board that tries to get involvement every year, because local government is the core of where things start and grow up to the national government. Couldn't, couldn't remember how often, anyway, so it is, yeah, right. So, so, so bring that forward to start when you, when you work with kids and people, get them involved every year at their local level and then grow it up that way.
I think that just speaks to the importance of civics education.
Mr. Marcus, not to be outdone. Vice Chair Barnes.
I actually am so impressed every year about the students that come before us, and I have to say, six years ago, which you didn't have this problem, because you have a range, age range of your kids, but I realized, I'm like, I've never seen any of these kids, didn't know any of these parents, and suddenly I'm starting to pick out names like Faust, where I'm finding that I'm really seeing the progression in, in, you know, because they have siblings that are my kids' age. So really, thank God that we have that, that ability to be able to get insight on what you're doing, so we can kind of, you know, prep our kids, you know, especially, and that's a very selfish thing, as a board member to say, but really, as well, when we talk to our constituents, and they say, "What can our kids do?" And we don't have a kid in, you know, with skin in the game yet. Your presentations tell us the potential of what's there, and I always tell my kids, you know, you're talking about what, you know, you want to do for college, but you have a first class, world-class free and public education before you with unlimited potential. It's what you take from it. And you show every year when you come what you can get from this unlimited potential world-class education. And thank you so much for bringing that to a context for us, because we do get so many, and we will be getting more academic presentations as well, but really seeing where that goes in, in practice and what you want to do in the world is so important for us to put two and two together. So thank you both, thank you all very much for that. And back to eighth-grade night, because I know that I was there, I was one of the, you know, what, three hundred parents, and it was a packed house, you're right. And you were talking about the Summer Institute a lot, and honestly, I walked out of there a little confused, and tonight kind of clarified it, and I think there were a lot of parents that may have felt like I did. And you were talking about like algebra and having the algebra program, and I don't think I realized that my son being in eighth-grade algebra, that he would be prepared for geometry. So, you know, I didn't realize, leaving there, that was really truly, the Summer Institute's about intervention, but not extension.
Right.
And I guess that's a question and maybe a comment, because I know this is a new program, and it will evolve and develop. But I look at those, you know, as you're doing a comprehensive pool of students now, they're now becoming the, the ball, and the ball will have areas for intervention and areas for extension. And I talk about areas for extension with that comprehensive group, that college prep group, talking about those who are teetering on the potential for honors but don't quite have the skills. And that's where I would like to see some of, some, maybe some programming developed to get them into those, prepped into the honors programs, that, you know, they just maybe don't have quite the skill set ready, but the Summer Institute around extension may, may get them to the next level. And then you'll have, you have, you have more AP classes than you can imagine, if I had to make a guess, but that's the one piece of feedback I think I get from the questions I've seen so far. I think there's a lot of communication on the change that I would recommend. You know, I talked about it a few years ago, when you were talking about standards-based grading, that, you know, it comes to not only students, and they're hearing it more and more in the classroom, but they're going to come home to their parents that don't understand what you just said. And I think there's going to be a lot more of that, when you talk about, you know, some of these, these programs that you're instituting, you know, your, your cross, your cross-discipline classes and all that, and how it meets the graduation standards and how you, how you coach your kids into, into their graduation, having those kind of classes on their transcripts, so picking the right ones to get them to where they want to go. So that being said, I think there's definitely the communication piece, and we've talked about it over and over as a board, that you have so much, again, world-class potential in a public education. I think having the, the communication tools, tools for both students and parents to help navigate that and maximize that effort will be very important going forward. So thank you very much for your presentations, a lot.
Thank you.
Any other comments? Mr. Powell.
Well, I say it every year that this time of the year is my favorite time of year, when the schools come to present, and, you know, I'm always excited to see what the high school brings, and as Mr. Schneider said, you, again, you stepped it up to the next level, so next year should be interesting to see how you do it. I have to say that I'm envious of many of the students that presented to us tonight, because I'm just a couple of years out of high school, and I still don't know what I want to do when I grow up. And to hear that most of you have got your life planned out already, as far as you can see, is, is just so impressive, and I applaud you for that. I, I also commend those that have brought Merrimack up to the level that, as Mrs. Barnes said, just isn't seen in a public education, in a public school. I honestly, I know of, of private schools around the country that would be envious of the program and the opportunities that you guys have at Merrimack, and I think it's incredible. I do want to ask a quick question about the new comprehensive level. You said that it won't affect current enrolled students.
Well, and that is, Davis, because we didn't want to throw something at kids, although we didn't want to change the promise for kids who were already freshmen and so on.
And I get, I get that. It's, you know, just like college, when the catalog changes, you stay with the catalog, you enroll as a freshman. That's perfectly understandable. My question, however, is for the, the, the students that are, let's say, a senior that's taking a junior-level class, or a sophomore that's taking a freshman-level class next year, what accommodations, if any, can be made for them?
Well, as you know, we have the Evening Academy, and that is one of the things that we have in place. That's, I don't know if I had that in this slide here or not, but it's a significant number of kids. I think the number is about thirty-six kids who are currently participating in the Evening Academy, and those are kids who have struggled, you know, during the, the school year, and some of them are sophomores, you know, taking either remediation or credit recovery. So that's part of this whole big piece. Essentially, if you look at the package, we helped to create Spring Board, to help kids transition from middle to high. Then, once they were at the high school, knowing that their goal would be to graduate with their peers, we've created and we have enhanced the Evening Academy. And now, on the flip side, we've actually taken what was Spring Board and enhanced that to what we call the Summer Institute, which only speaks to ultimately what will happen to the Evening Academy. Will it grow and become that much more significant? Or will the interventions that are done through, the progressive interventions that are done through the Summer Institute minimize the need of the Evening Academy? That's a question to be determined in the future, but that's what we have in place right now.
Perfect. Well, thank you for sharing it, and good luck and congratulations to all of you.
Ms. Gualyumi.
I'd also like to express my thanks tonight, and to the students, thank you so much. I just simply want to say that you make us all very proud. You're a fine representation of our school and our community. So thank you, best of luck to you and your futures.
And I'll echo the sentiments of, of the board. One of the things that I will remember most about serving on the board are the chances that I get to interact and hear from students, because you do make us proud. There, there's an expression in governance that governing is like making sausage, right? The end result is wonderful, right? Everybody loves sausage, it's delicious, it's, it's fantastic, but you don't want to watch it being made. Well, what we do at this table, discussing budgets and policy and curriculum, is the process, right? And sometimes we get lost in those debates and, and discussion, and the focus really is the end product. All of you, what you've gained from your experience in the district. And as was said, you couldn't make us prouder. We see the things that we're talking about at this table coming to life in each of you. One of the things that we developed is a logic model. It's a strategic plan for the district, and one of, two of the objectives are student-directed learning and the creation of lifelong learners, people who thrive to learn more, whether you go on to college or not, but you're, you're inspired to learn. And what's very clear through your presentations is that we're already delivering on that. I think when I came on the board, we might have had a half dozen AP courses, and now we have sixteen, right? The fact that ninety percent of students are interested in going to college, it shows us that it's working. All of you are fantastic role models. We wish you the best of luck in your future endeavors, and thank you for your wonderful presentations tonight and administration.
Well, Chris, I'd like to thank you, but I'd also like to speak specifically to you, because I'd like to echo some sentiments as well. And, and... And and I would just say that in my time here as principal, and it's been a long time, but during your time on the board, you've always uh, kept the kids in your heart. Your leadership on this board has been an exemplary uh, leadership. And I would say that, as I look back on my eighteen years in Merrimack, you are indeed one of the true treasures of this community. And I speak for the administration and the high school in thanking you for your service. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you, everyone. And that will now take us to item number six in a legislative update. I will invite to the table uh, two of uh, the representatives from our delegation. Uh, the Honorable Jack Belkum and the Honorable Chris Christiansen. Welcome, gentlemen. And I believe, um, as it relates to pending uh, legislation, there are roughly seven bills. That uh, I think you intended to address this evening, even though I'm sure. There are far more underway in that sausage-making process.
Yep. Thank you for having us tonight. It's a tough act to follow. I'm very proud of Merrimack High School, all the schools, but that's right on point. Um, yeah, Jack is on the Education Committee as the Vice Chair. I'm the Chairman of the Resources, Recreation and Development Committee. So, we did bring a couple of, I brought a couple of quick things, and then we're gonna focus, I think, more on on Jack's bills in the Education Committee. And I brought information about two bills, uh, particularly interesting to me, because they both failed. But they came out of a study committee studying liability situations uh, for governmental bodies. One of them had to do with schools and governmental bodies, meaning mostly towns, but other political subdivisions. Uh, being liable for injuries from children or others who uh, fall off or injure themselves somehow on playground equipment. And the other one had to do with uh, employees being liable for negligent acts. Uh, right now, as an employee, they're they're protected. So both of those bills failed, but the point goes to the fact that the Attorney General's Office is looking at this stuff very closely. Uh, we have a couple of similar bills dealing with liability issues uh, for park volunteers. I'm involved in the park system on a statewide basis. And I think this is gonna come back, in one way or another. If the school through its insurer has to absorb some of that liability, then you're probably gonna be looking at. Uh, some different procedures and uh, the insurance company's gonna come down and be a little bit more watchful. And they're gonna charge you a lot more money, because they're gonna say, gee, we don't know, we don't have any experience in this. If we don't have any experience, we have to set a hi- aside bigger reserves, which means we charge you more premium. So I think it's gonna continue, and I won't say anymore about it tonight, but keep an eye out for those uh, those issues. And with that, I'm gonna let Jack carry the evening.
I agree with Chris that it's a tough act to follow. And I've seen on uh, television how's. Some sessions, you're out of here by seven-thirty. Well, when it's either feast or famine, we're not gonna try to keep you here too long. And and uh, Dr. Chaffrey uh, helped you out by only giving me seven bills to talk on. Um, given that, uh, education's been pretty busy. We had, um. Let's see, we had over fifty-four bills that came uh, through the House and another thirty through the Senate. Uh, this, um, this Wednesday, two days from today, uh, three bills that'll be on the consent agenda. And the Senate will be getting on Thursday. Uh, Senate uh, Senate Bill twenty-five, oh, I'm sorry, this already comes through the Senate. Relative to the administration of Efron Efrin, uh, the uh, there'll be certain people within the schools that will be able to. Uh, dispense this. The pharmaceutical companies will be funding it. And if somebody uh, has an allergy, uh, the medicine will be there. Uh, Senate Bill three-seventy, establishing a committee to study real-time threat notification systems. To link schools with law enforcement when schools are under direct threat. How to pass, uh. You might wanna um, to look at this bill. It's uh, uh, completely for the safety and preparedness for our schools and our students. Uh, three-seventy-one, relative to the school lunch program. This was, uh, again, all all three of these are bipartisan bills. They're on the consent agenda. And three-seventy-one has to do with school lunches, making it the responsibility of the parents, not putting the students on the spot. We have some schools that have separate lunch lines, uh, for those that are getting free uh, free lunches or um, partially free. Uh, this way that no child will be uh, standing in a different line for lunch. Also, uh, kids that haven't paid their bill. It doesn't put them on the spot. It puts the parents on the spot. Okay, going into the seven bills. Um, House Bill thirteen-seventy-two, uh, permitting a child with a um, disability to use audio or video in the classroom. Adopted with amendment in Senate Education, uh, Senator Avar, Senator Stiles and and four other on the House. We are, we were sponsors, uh, basically uh, straightforward, embraced by the special education community. At their uh, monthly meeting in Feb- in uh, I think it was in February, it was whenever I was on the panel there. Um, basically, the amendment basically holds, uh, makes it so that this particular uh, bill doesn't harm, doesn't do any harm. In other words, uh, nothing in this section shall preclude the use of audio or video recordings for use with it. Or by a child with dis- disability, or by such child's teacher or service provider. When the child's individualized education program or IEP or accommodation plan includes audio or visual recording. And then, nothing in this section shall preclude the use of audio or video recordings for student instructional purposes, et cetera, et cetera. Uh, situations where it would actually uh, help, uh, nothing in this section to preclude the use of audiovisual for use in instruction. Of teacher, interns or student teachers, et cetera, who have to provide video recordings. Um, of course, after written notification of the parent's or legal guardian, et cetera, et cetera. Uh, to to take care of those parents that often call us and will say, oh, was my child videotaped? And no, without my permission, et cetera. Um, okay, so that's, that's the uh, House Bill thirteen-seventy-two.
Mr. Belkum?
Yes.
Would would it be helpful to you um, as you go through each bill to perhaps get uh, feedback or questions? Um, one at a time or to hold that uh, till the end?
Sure.
Okay.
I'll take, I'll take questions anytime.
Um, so before I open it up to questions, I'll just make a note um, in terms of a couple of things. Uh, Senate Bill three-seventy about the real-time notification. I would just let you know that uh, the district um, and the board approved uh, the COP-Sync uh, nine-one-one uh, program. And that's been rolled out within the schools, which is what I think that bill is referring to, which is the real-time notification and alert system. Um, so we've done that. And um, it's unfortunate uh, that there's a need to legislate uh, the uh, the lunch program and the lunch lines. In order to um, not have them segregated uh, for those who are paying and getting free and reduced. I know the the process uh, uh, within the district is a single line and the kids are never put on the spot. So, um, it's unfortunate that there are districts that aren't doing that, um, but and that it needs to be legislated. But um, certainly, um, uh, I understand why that's the case. Ms. Gualyumi.
Um, I had a question regarding that that lunch, um, that lunch bill. And does that also mean like, for example, if a child's balance is at zero, that they wouldn't get like the cheese sandwich, let's say? Or that they should, but it's rather up to the parents to?
Okay, there was a, there, there was a lot of testimony on that. The um, the fact that there's two, in some schools, there's two separate lunches. Based on um, you know, what category you fall into and, or if you owe money. Uh, it puts the child on the spot. You know, the the child themselves probably has no idea that that they're in arrears as far as payments go. And so this bill basically shifts that burden over to the parents.
Okay, thank you.
Uh, Mr. Marcus.
So does the bill stipulate what action the school has to take with regard to speaking to the students' parents about paying the bills? Or does it leave that up to the discretion of the schools?
Well, I've I've never really been involved in that process. There there is uh, uh, staff. It actually is their job to contact the parents, I understand, when uh, when the students are in arrears.
Okay, so the bill doesn't change that process, though, that already exists?
No, that's on the local level.
Okay.
Thanks. And any questions from the board or comment regarding audiovisual recording? Vice Terrence Martin.
Uh, the one area, and I put it on my main overture of notes, so I might as well just hit it up now. And that is after written notification to the parent or legal guardian of each affected. Um, it's really, it's about opt-in versus opt-out. And the effectiveness of being able to do opt-in um, as a, as a practice for for conducting school business. And the burden it puts on administration to uh, basically do housekeeping and not getting the job done. I I completely agree with opt-out. Um, I think we're very, we're heavily in the practice of that. When there's content that uh, we feel that parents may wanna be made aware of and and have the choice on. But uh, opting in has has been a concern. So I know with uh, recording, opt-in is a requirement versus opt-out. And I do think that that's going to make it very difficult for um, school districts to to do what they, the job they wanna do. When uh, parents are required to opt-in for for that to happen effectively, so.
Well, I mean, that's all, that's not really set by this bill. That's, privacy policy is has been set. Um, I don't know if that's the federal level or or state level, but.
Well, I believe the original, this is an amendment to the uh, to the original, and the original required opt-in for recording in classrooms. Versus opt-out, saying, I don't want my child recorded, I wanna opt my child out. It's all parents in every seat in the classroom had to opt-in. So that is a a bigger um, burden to to the administration of of um, a school district's operation than opting out. And that is from this bill, the local. Uh, we discussed it heavily at the New Hampshire School Boards Association uh, Delegate Assembly in January. And that opt-in is becoming a challenge for uh, for school dis- districts to be able to get that opt-in, get the parents to sign off. So that we can get the job done. So that's, that's a challenge that is real and local.
Right. Yeah, there was a lot of discussion on that. And uh, but there there's been a a policy in place before this particular bill. Uh, as far as getting permission, if you're gonna do a recording in a classroom, getting all the, all of the parents' permission or or.
Correct. And that's, this is the follow-on to that with the amendments to adjust for things like special education. But as an overriding theme, I think opt-in is a difficult burden to put on local administration to get the job done. And when you see bills with that language, I think it's putting um, undue stress on the operation of the district, in my, in my personal opinion.
Superintendent?
Um, what I wanted to just to share is I I think, um, and I would hope, Jack, you would tell us if this was true. The original intent of the bill was to preclude um, evaluations being done of teachers with audio or visual devices. I think that was the original intent. And so the thing that's most important to us is that um, we are able, though. To do audio and videotaping in the classroom for not only IEP purposes, but also, we will have students who will be home ill for a period of time. And we are able to have a child like Skype in to be able to see instruction going on, so that the child can have that from home. And or we have a number of student teachers who are in the district. We pride ourselves on having a number of them. And some of the times, one of the things that their program will will expect is for them to be videotaped, so that they can go back and look at it. So, anything that can be done to free it up. And then, the point that Shannon is making is. Before, we would inform a class about what was going on, but you opted out if you didn't want to be a part of it. And now, or the way it was originally contrived is, every parent had to say yes to it. Which makes it very difficult, because if you don't get all the yeses, for whatever reason, then you're having to start to split the class up. So it just becomes very, very difficult. So we wanna respect what parents want done. At the same time, the kinds of uses that we're trying to employ, it just makes it so difficult. So anything that can be done. And this, I realize, is in process, and this is much better than the original bill. So, um, anything that can be done to just free us up a bit, to be able to do these kinds of efforts would be so helpful.
Okay, I get, I get the message. And and this is always a, uh, this is always a discussion point on these bills. And when we get to the non-public ser- non-academic surveys, et cetera. And um. Let's just say that there's an ongoing philosophy battle in the House right now and and in the Senate. And um, I I, you're absolutely, the intent of the bill was permitting a child with a disability. That was the primary, and it right up in the title. But it it, fortunately, it was amended, so it made it. Uh, you know, acceptable to everyone.
It's one, one of the uh, the the dangers of unintended consequences, right?
Right.
Yeah.
Well, every, every bill has some unintended consequence.
Right.
Okay, the next one is House Bill fourteen-fifty-seven, establishing a code of professional ethics for New Hampshire teachers. It went to interim study. Uh, the prime sponsor was our chairman, Representative Ladd. And uh, I was a co-sponsor of it, along with Senator Avar and Senator Reagan. Um, why did we come up with this? We didn't come up with this to harass teachers, for sure. What we did was, this was actually, or we came up with this as a vehicle uh, uh, for your use. Uh, let me read a a couple of quotes from it. A violation of this section shall constitute grounds for disciplinary action. Okay. Uh, fundamental belief is that the student is the foremost reason for the existence of the teaching profession. So this gives you some guidelines that you can operate in if you have to, uh, if there's a, an instance that's really unacceptable within the school system. Uh, obviously, it's not targeted towards this school district, because this school district is a, um, I don't, I don't believe. Uh, this is a real issue, but um, it does, it was meant to assist. It was meant to. Uh, you know, give you added uh, wiggle room or or uh, another tool in your toolkit, uh, if something did come up. Okay, any questions on that one? It went to interim study, so basically it's killed for this session.
The superintendent put up her hand.
So one of the things I know here that's terribly important is the work that's being done with the Professional Standards Board. And in that particular case, Merrimack is advantaged, because the chairman of the Professional Standards Board is John Fribrizio. So that's really um, a. of the Professional Standards Board is John Fribrizio. So, that's really, um, a good thing, because we kind of have an in to what's, what's going on. What I would say, Jack, again, is, um, a tool like this is very, um, helpful to us. I think, um, all educators, um, want, um, guidelines or, um, ethical rendering. It helps them. It helps, um, us. However, whatever it is that, that we finally come up with, uh, it needs to be, uh, not so extensive that it's difficult to follow. And I think one of the samples that you looked at is about ten pages long, and that becomes unwieldy. I mean, it's just not a tool any longer. It's just overwhelming. So, I would say, I would be hopeful that whatever, um, comes to, uh, a final point is something that will just be good for all concerned. And the other thing I think that's being looked at is that the Professional Standards Board wo- would oversee, if you will, um, the code of, um, ethics. And quite frankly, this is a place where I so much believe in local control. I think it's so important for us to have, if you will, these guidelines. That would be helpful. But I think this governing board, um, along with the administration, um, would be the best overseers. And the minute it starts going away from us or goes to a Professional Standards Board, I just don't think it's as effective. So, I think you would hear John say the same thing as the chairman of that board. Um, so, I just commend that to your thinking. I know it's got a long ways to go yet.
Right, yeah. Um, this, uh, this is the other side of the coin, and, and I'm starting to really rethink this. So, when we go into interim study, and I'm sure I'll be on the committee that looks at it, that, uh, we don't, we don't want to interfere with what goes on at the local level if it's working. And, and we may even just kill the bill outright. It may not be needed at all. In fact, I'm starting to... Okay.
Oh, there's more hands up. Uh, Mr. Powell?
I just wanted to bring your attention to page two of fourteen fifty-seven, line eighteen.
Okay.
Um...
That's one of the bills. I do not have the, the text with me.
Oh.
Yeah, I've got...
Okay. Well, it, it goes to Mrs. Barnes's point, um, that she just spoke of previously about opting in versus opting out. There's an opt-in piece here that, if I'm reading it correctly, basically says that any survey or questionnaire or anything else that goes to the district, or that goes out, has to be approved by a parent before the student can take it. And as the superintendent was, um, explaining it, it just makes it burdensome, um, for us to do that. So, in your interim review, just a, a piece of food for thought there.
Okay, thank you.
Oh, I see. I finally caught up to where you were. Vice Chair Barnes?
That's right. And honestly, I just wanted to share with you my notes, because I look, I look through these and, and make notes as I'm reading them. And it, I really do think with fourteen fifty-seven, my notes were, "Should that not be left to the school district with which teacher, the teacher is employed?" My question was, um, "Where do you think it's lacking in teachers' employee handbooks?" So, again, I was going to ask what research you did to find where it was lacking in teacher-employee handbooks. Um, so, if, have you done, if there is no backing research to say that there is, uh, insufficient data regarding, um, I guess, uh, teacher codes of conduct in, in, in handbooks, then that would be a whole different animal to me. And then, I was really, um, alarmed in, uh, section three, uh, specifically areas A through C, where it talks about, um, "In fulfilling obligations of students, the New Hampshire teacher shall not, without just cause, deny the student access to varying points of view, shall not intentionally suppress or distort subject matter, and, um, shall protect the student from conditions detrimental to learning." Now, when you look at that, I think we have, um, teacher evaluations, we have standards, we have, um, curriculum and, and, uh, honestly, when you get into that, it's a very subjective area. I think that we have measures in place to make sure that doesn't happen in the district. And if it does, I think there's communication within even teaching groups and, and with administration to, to avoid that. So, I look at that as, when you're thinking about, um, that this bill impacts, um, licensing for teachers, that you're getting very aggressive into, uh, what I would call the day-to-day operation of a school district and, and making sure that, um, the operations are, are running to our expectations. So, that was, to me, standing out is, is what not to do, um, as far as, uh, taking away local control. So, that, that was my very specific example of that. So, if you are considering dropping this bill, I would encourage it. I understand, um, part of it was about inappropriate relationships with teachers and students and, and licensing, and I'm all about that. But, uh, outside of that, I think this bill has a lot of places to do more harm than good.
Okay, thank you for your input.
There's, uh, advice I got, uh, from a, a sales guy when, when I was starting out. And, and he said, "If, uh, if the customer has said yes, stop speaking." Um, he, he, you're, you're done, because all you can do is unwind the deal. Um, so when you said, "I get it. I think I'll, you know, probably kill this," we get it.
I think my goal is to get you to advocate, to get the others to do it, too.
Yeah.
So, I'm backing it up.
Okay.
Moving on.
See no more questions. Um, we'll come to my favorite House bill, uh, House Bill sixteen forty-four. Why is it my favorite? Because I'm the prime sponsor. Um, this has to do with, uh, screening for dyslexia and putting a reading specialist up at the level of the State Department of Education. Um, why did this come about? It came about because a bipartisan group of individuals got together and looked at our forty percent deficiency in reading throughout the state and set up a commission by House Bill five nineteen last year. I chaired the commission, and we came up, uh, with some guidelines of identification and remedial action. You know, what, what do we do? I mean, what's the purpose of identifying a child with a reading disability? And, um, we listened to testimony all last summer while you guys were enjoying time on the beach or wherever. And all fall, we listened to, uh, literally about over a hundred people from various expertise. And there wasn't one that said that we didn't need some kind of legislation on what's considered to be the invisible disability. Seventeen percent of your students have been identified, uh, on an average of having just some form of dyslexia. Uh, I can look around the room, and I can't tell you who's dyslexic and who's not. That's why we call it the invisible disability. So, we formulated, uh, some of the best legislations throughout the country of other states, and we put together what we consider to be, um, legislation that fits the New Hampshire, uh, uh, basically landscape. And basically, what it does is it, uh, is a guideline for, uh, school districts who are, you know, wondering what the best practices should be. Uh, we, we basically put in this bill the best practices, and we put in a position up at the Department of Education to help the school districts, so that they had a resource that they could turn to if, um, if they had questions on how to go ahead and implement, uh, this identification and testing of students, uh, for this, for some form of reading disability or dyslexia. There was another element where it, um, we sent guidelines to the, um, Department of Education that this individual should have certain qualifications and should also be able to, uh, help the universities within the state to, uh, give an element of, of how to go ahead and, and do the testing and identify these students within the curriculum of those educators coming out of these institutions like King State, Plymouth State, et cetera. Um, sorry, I'm losing my voice. This has been happening to me all week, unfortunately. Uh, okay, so that, that is going to become, uh, in front of the State Education Committee. Oh, boy, that'd be great. Thanks, Shannon. Well...
That would be better.
Yeah.
I have to say, when we heard the zero tolerance here, um, one of the things they did was actually, when you're talking parts per trillion, they wanted to see what the, they took bottled water, and they found out that the control of pure water, you still got a five or, five or less, um, parts per trillion reading, even with a pure bottle of water. I just throw that out as a member of the MVD, uh, Water Board. Okay, thanks, Shannon. That was great. Yeah. So, are there any questions on that bill? Yes?
Mr. Powell?
Thank you.
That's it.
Oh.
That's it?
Thank you. Well, thank you. I was, that's a...
No, I, I, I appreciate you, um, uh, putting it forward. I appreciate the time that you spent on the, the study of it. Um, and, and I, and, you know, there, there are other districts that don't, uh, that aren't as fortunate to have the resources that we do, and I think this gives them great direction, um, to help their students. So, thank you.
Ditto. Um, Vice Chair Barnes?
I actually just had a quick question. Um, I think it's a great bill. I think you're doing a great thing with it, so I, I also applaud your efforts. It's in the fiscal note, um, on the last page, talking about the methodology and fiscal impact. Uh, for fiscal year two thousand seventeen, it's ninety-eight thousand in funding. And then, in, uh, fiscal year two thousand eighteen, it goes down two thousand to ninety-six thousand, but then goes up five thousand in fiscal year nineteen to one hundred and one. So, is there a reason that goes down and then back up again? The, the funding?
Well, just to set up the, uh, uh, this, this position at DOE, although I believe that it's probably the mo- if you had one person at DOE on the state level, it should be reading, because reading is fundamental, as far as I'm concerned, and we learned that throughout the testimony. And by, by the way, we had all kinds of parents thanking us, which was, which really made it a rewarding experience. And, and thanks again, Davis, for that. Thank you, because we forget. Um, but, you know, getting, getting back to your comment, um, the intention was not to create another unfunded mandate down to the school districts that don't have good practices. It was basically, um, to have them expend their energies where it could best do the good, and that's identifying these students at first grade or kindergarten to first grade, rather than, some districts did it at third grade, which allowed students between the time they were learning to read in kindergarten and first grade to the third grade. They actually experienced a lot of, uh, anxiety by looking around and saying, "Jeez, the others, the other kids are getting this right away, but why am I not getting it?" And they became frustrated and to the point where some kids were saying, um, "Jeez, I, I don't want to go to school. It's not fun. I, um, I'm stupid. I'm lazy. The teacher says I'm lazy." Uh, um...
Uh, my question wasn't about the, the need. It really wasn't, because I totally understand that part. It was about the funding, because it starts out with the first year...
Oh.
Having ninety-eight thousand in funding, and then you lose two thousand the next year, but then you gain five thousand in year three over the year two. And then, so why, how did it go down from year one to year two?
Well, okay, I have nothing to do with the fiscal note. That's put into another part of the legislative services.
Okay.
And what they, they looked at initially was to recruit and to fund that position. Now, I think you're looking at an old fiscal note, because Department of Education stepped up and funded it through IDEA funds for special education. And, uh, that, that's what made it sail twenty-six to nothing through our, uh, financial committee in the House, which we would have probably been up against a lot of, uh, uh, resistance. But it was twenty-six to nothing, a slam dunk.
Excellent.
And that's because, um, our Department of Education said, "Okay, we understand this is required. Here's the funding. And when we go into further by items, it'll be within the budget. It'll be funded."
Okay.
And to answer your question, the, uh, initially, when you're starting out a job like that, and you're starting to contact all the school districts and getting them up and running, uh, the school districts start to, uh, say, "Okay, that's the help we needed. Now we got it." And, and hopefully, at some point in time, that reading specialist can focus more on other areas than at the local school districts. I hope that answered your question.
I think so. And our notes were from December twenty-first of fifteen, so I think things may have changed since then.
Always been amended.
Great, okay.
Yeah, it was amended, uh, in January after it went in front of the full House the first time, and only passed a hundred and eighty-three to a hundred and seventy-six. Barely got through. We almost lost it. Fortunately, the, the gentleman to my left was a supporter, and I appreciated that. Okay, so...
Thanks, Jack.
Seeing, seeing nothing else in the House side, um, Senate Bills, uh, one fifty-seven, uh, let's see, pass, uh, competency assessment of U.S. and, and New Hampshire civics. God, did I get an education tonight, when, uh, I saw the curriculum at the high school and the students. And this is so well-covered in this school district. I mean, all this Senate bill did was to, to make awareness for this and how important it was. And it was watered down to where, uh, you may use the immigration text, and you would give out a certificate for those students that passed it. It wouldn't, uh, it didn't have to count as a credit, but, uh, that's, that's the way it came, came out of the Senate. And I, I was surprised when you picked this one, because, um, we had a similar bill last year that went through and, and it kind of died in the Senate. Um, I don't know what else I can say about this one.
Superintendent?
Jack, I, I just picked it because we hadn't focused on it before, and I knew tonight we were going to focus on the high school and, um, you know, to Jacob, you know about his love of the social studies, but it was to highlight that this, I gather, has a good chance of, of passing. Is that true?
Right, yes.
And so, then it would be implemented, what, sixty days after?
Um, effective, actually, this particular bill did pass, uh, the House and the Senate. We already, we voted on this on that marathon, uh, time that we had, and it became effective March sixteenth, two thousand and sixteen, so it's already law.
So, the expectation would be then...
Right.
Whoops, the expectation would be then that it would need to be implemented in the year sixteen, seventeen, right, the school year?
Yes.
Yeah.
The, the governor's already signed this bill.
So, I think that was the reason, is because it's like forthcoming, and so, I, I wanted people to realize that this is something we need to be about doing.
Section seven dot two says it, it shall only apply to students eligible to receive a high school diploma or equiv- equivalency certificate on or after January seven, or January first, two thousand and seventeen, which means it would be next year.
Yeah. Okay, Senate Bill one, by the way, Senate Bill one fifty-two and Senate Bill three twenty will be voted on in the full House on Wednesday. Okay. Senate Bill one fifty-two, uh, criminal history records check, uh, for school employees and designated school volunteers, uh, brought by Senator Bouton and Senators, uh, Birdso, Reagan, Carson, Cataldo. Um, the reason this came up, and we had a similar bill last year, is that, uh, there was, um, I forget what school district, but it was kind of further north, but not fully north. Uh, there was a school employee that came in and, and committed, um, a sexual, uh, offense against one of the students. And it turned out that he had a prior record, but, um, he had committed what would most would consider a felony in, uh, in this, in the previous school district in another state. And it was bargained down to a misdemeanor. So, normal school records, from what I understand, don't go down as far as misdemeanors. What this bill did was, um, basically bring the background study for school employees and volunteers down to the level where it's going to catch, um, all offenses, uh, so that this gives the administration, when they're hiring an individual... uh, so that this gives the administration, when they're hiring an individual for the school district, considering the safety of the children, that they have a full picture of this employee. And that, like I said, that comes before the full House on Wednesday. Any questions on that one?
So, I, I, my question is perhaps, uh, Mr. Belkam, not directed to you, but, uh, to administration. I, I see the intent, and I think that's a great thing. Um, I, I wonder, however, whether in fact, um, uh, at least in, in that case, it, it would have been a great thing, I don't know about, uh, across the board, but I also wonder, um, whether this level of background check incurs additional costs to the district to perform, to pull a record that includes both felonies and misdemeanors, as opposed to just felonies.
Um, what I will just answer is, I'm, I'm not quite sure about the cost, but what I will tell you is that our association, um, has been looking at this, and, um, colleagues of ours who have moved from Massachusetts to New Hampshire have talked about the significance of this particular, um, criminal history record check, because they have had it, and so it's been beneficial to them, especially to look for a pattern of behavior over time. My understanding is, and the Council for School Attorneys are looking at this, as a matter of fact, my understanding is this, this is significant to the superintendent, him or herself. No one else will receive this particular record, so it's, it's finite, it's for the superintendent to, um, take a look at, and then there is specificity as to how long you have to look at it, and how you must destroy the records, and so on. So, we're interested in dealing with the Council for School Attorneys, because if a person is not a successful candidate, we want to look at the liability of that, and, and, and just understand its ramifications. So I see its goodness, I understand it, and yet, when you operationalize it, you have to worry about those things. So, because we felt, as a, as a, an association of school superintendents, that this is probably going to pass, would you say? Jack, do you think it will? That we need to be underway as far as operationalizing it, so when it comes to costs and liability and all the rest of it, I'm not quite there yet, we just covered this on Friday, um, but that's the reason I included it, because I realize it's on a fast track, I guess I would say.
Thank you, that's helpful.
Yeah, let me just double-check that. Yes, it had seventeen to two coming out of committee with a recommendation, uh, ought to pass, so that will probably go through, I think, pretty good chance. And the, uh, I think the, the next one might be a little controversial. Senate Bill three twenty, it's what we talked about relative to non-academic surveys administered by public schools to its students, um, with, uh, the, the parents would have to opt, opt in with a signature, and it, the only thing, it doesn't apply to the Center of Disease Control and Protection Risk Survey that's been, uh, necessary to administer to, uh, um, to, to students to find areas that are, you know, critical to the safety of the children or the students.
Superintendent?
On this one, I'm, I'm so interested, because I, um, would just have to tell you that the school board approves every survey that's ever issued, and in this, Jack, I couldn't quite tell whether other school districts do the same kind of thing or not, and I think that's been an inhibitor, if you will, because we don't have SCADS of surveys, I think they're very modulated, I mean, you've, many of you have been on the board for a long time, and we will have somebody, let's say, that's doing doctoral research or whatever, and they want to, um, have the students weigh in on a particular survey, so it's brought before the board, and we understand its intent, and then the board will approve it or disprove it. And, um, so again, in this one, I'm, I'm interested in what was the precipitating, um, event? I mean, have there been surveys that have just gone wrong, and, because we've had, we've just had success with our practice, I think, and, and I don't want to jinx this, but I don't think we have ever had a parent, um, be in opposition to anything that's been done, and I think it's because a group of parents are determining whether they think it has merit or not. So we don't do it often, but when we do do it, it's for a very defined purpose. So, and I was glad to see that the, um, risk behavior, the, the Youth Risk Behavior Survey is still in place, because we have a major grant, and if we didn't have access to that, our grant would fall apart. But in addition, I just want to say, um, I think this will be more limiting for us, because we have a method that works, you know, but this speaks to all school districts, I realize.
Yes. Um, yes, it was, um, the initial bill that set up the committee, chaired by Senator Avard, that met all during the off-session months last year, it was precipitated in Manchester by exposure of, uh, children to, uh, surveys of sexual questions, uh, and content, and to some extent, drug. Uh, okay, for example, and I don't know who's watching the TV, but one of the questions was, um, have you ever sniffed glue? Okay, the parents, uh, thought that, well, this will give the kids an idea, you know, it's, uh, when we say, don't do any harm, well anyways, it, it, it rolled to a, a bill that was somewhat innocuous last year, they set up a commission, Senator Avard, uh, took that, and we had a lot of testimony, uh, I would say it was a very balanced board, I was surprised, uh, most, most of the people that, in fact, the people that sponsored the bill were all on the board here, and, uh, and the only one that's not on there is Representative Guile, and she, I think, was the, the lone opposer of the final legislation. But, uh, it was, it was suggested during discussion, when it came out of committee, that perhaps the school districts could, uh, you know, make this easier on themselves by asking the parents at the beginning of the year to sign, uh, whether they want to be notified or not, if there's a non-academic survey, or it's okay for them, uh, based on the judgment of the administration and the schools, uh, whether they want to take it, so that would immediately give you a signature authority for a big majority of parents. Given that, there is also testimony that kids take something home in their backpack to get signed, and, or, or notification of a survey, that they can go and they can come into the school and look at the survey, and sometimes that notification, uh, doesn't find its way into the hands of the parents. So there was testimony on that. This is the bill that came out of that, and it goes into, very controversial, eleven to nine out of committee, okay, majority ought to pass with amendment, okay? So, uh, we'll see what happens, it's going to be a close vote, okay? And, uh, I, I don't, I don't know, you, you, do you have a copy of that, Bill?
Yes.
With you, okay. Uh, I'll, I'll try to take any questions on that, but like I said, it is what it is.
Vice Chair Barnes?
Well, while we have you here, we're going to give you whatever feedback we have, and, uh, first and foremost, again, opt-in versus opt-out is a nightmare, and whatever bill has opt-in, is, you're basically putting a bird down on us, that's, that's, that's difficult to endure, and to get the job done. Um, again, you know, it's funny that one of the authors was here and talked about how important local control was, and now he's an author of a bill taking it out of our hands, so that's difficult. You know, we, we expected local, we, this is something that we can manage here. I understand, based on your testimony tonight, that it was one specific school district with, with one specific problem that's creating a statewide legislation, and that's not how we should, I think, be supporting the, the business of, of educating the schools. Every district runs differently, and every district has its own, um, opportunities and challenges, and we, when they're presented to us, we manage them locally in a way that we find most effective, based upon, um, the infrastructure that we have. To put legislation in place that ties the hands of the people, that we ask to deliver the job of, of performing this public education service, and, uh, limiting us from getting data that can benefit this district based on legislation like this, is not doing the job that, not helping us do our job effectively. So I think, you know, as you're talking to your colleagues, um, if you could shut this one down, I think it's a great thing that it doesn't, that it doesn't see the light of day.
Can, can I just ask? Where did you see that it's an opt-in policy?
Or you require the parents to sign?
Yes, it does.
Uh, so I'm reading line-
Line six.
Line six.
Without written consent of a parent or legal guardian unless the student is an adult.
But then, line twelve says, "Your policy shall also allow a parent or legal guardian to opt out of the non-academic survey or questionnaire, either in writing or electronically." So it's unclear to me whether this is opt-in or opt-out.
And honestly, it's the, it's the bold italics, that's amended language, it says it's opting in, which is what alarmed me the most. They meant to do that.
Yeah, I just want to make one comment, that in all due respect, uh, to your beliefs, the testimony that we heard, a lot of parents believe that local control begins in the, in their house, with the parents, okay, that is what they consider to be local control. Okay, I appreciate you.
Right, no, I understand that, and that's why we would absolutely, if there's a survey going out, we would send a notice to, to the parents, and we have electronic notices that they get in their emails and texts or whatever, that give them the option to look into it and opt out. I'm not saying that they shouldn't have the opportunity to opt out, I'm saying that to put the burden on us to require them to opt in is the problem. I definitely see opting out as, as something that's appropriate.
Understand, I came in on the opt-out side, and, uh, because of, you know, the, the, you know, the burden is there, but still, there are, there are things that slip through the cracks, and I understand the other side of the argument also.
At a minimum, hopefully, the language is consistent, clearly, you know, we would, and you would like to see it be opt-out, but there are two sections where it, it's in conflict, so hopefully, regardless of what it winds up being, um, hopefully that can get cleaned up. So there is clarity in the, in the legislation.
Any, any more questions on that? That was probably the most controversial bill that we've discussed tonight. Eleven to nine is an extremely close vote in, in the Education Committee. We're normally bipartisan, and we're normally very, uh, Chairman Ladd usually has an atmosphere of, uh, people listening and understanding each other, and much like this school board. Given that, we get to the, uh, the last bill here, Senate Bill, uh, three sixty-nine, encouraging public schools to include drug and alcohol education as part of their health education. Age-appropriate now, uh, and this passed, and it, and, um, it went back and forth between the House and the Senate, I believe it's still in committee of con, committee of conference, and I have a, a aide here, wait a minute. Just want to hold this up, I, I dropped off a video of chasing the dragon in the superintendent's office. This is the number-one issue in the state today. Uh, we lose, uh, we lose over, uh, each day, over one person dies in this state, and that number's climbing. And there was a seminar at Suresk, uh, last week, where we had the FBI, we had US Marshal, we had heads of chiefs of, of police, we had our representatives in, in, uh, the Senate, uh, the US Senate, et cetera, and if you watched the video, Chasing the Dragon, I also found out it's available on YouTube, Chasing the Dragon, it's a forty-nine-minute video. I recommend that everybody watch this. Parents should screen it if they're going to let their mature children watch it. There is profanity, and it is very frightening what goes on in the state. Other than that, um, I don't have anything else.
Are there any questions or comments from the board or administration? I want to thank both of you for, uh, coming tonight and braving the, uh, the weather and the roads, um, and, uh, for the, uh, later start than normal. I know when you come to, uh, school board meetings, we usually have you first on the agenda, and tonight we had students here, and so you had to, uh, wait a little while, and so I appreciate-
That was a pleasure.
You're staying late, I'm glad, uh, you enjoyed it as we did, um, so-
I do have one- Oh, yes. I couldn't get my, my light to work here. I want to backtrack just a little bit to the, the question about background checks. Uh, we've had some questions about that in other areas, not necessarily education, but I think there's going to be some legislation on that next year, and, and I'd like to ask the administration to keep me in the loop on that. One of the problems that we have, the varying levels of background checks. If you go down the street to your local gun shop and want to buy a, a gun, they have to do a background check. But they can phone it in or fax it in and get an answer in five or ten minutes, fifteen minutes. It's just a yes or no, this person is qualified to buy the gun, that's fine. If you want to do a background check for a town employee, uh, and we run into this in particular with, uh, summer camp employees, because they're, they're part-time, and, and we're doing them over and over and over. Costs us twenty-five dollars, we have to go to the state, uh, you mail them in, it takes a couple of weeks. If you want them immediately, you have to drive up there, and somebody will do them immediately. But if you've got somebody coming from Massachusetts, we have a password. We log into the system, we get the information almost instantly, for free. So, there's, there's some deficiencies in the, in the New Hampshire system right now, and I think we're going to be looking at that next year, and I, I just, like I said, I'd like to be kept in the loop on, uh, what you might be doing, so it can be a, a more global approach.
Very helpful. Mr. Powell?
Can I just ask the superintendent a question? The, the fingerprinting, the electronic fingerprinting system that we have now, is that instantaneous? Or does that take time as well?
No, it takes time.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions? Again, gentlemen, thank you very much, uh, for coming to meet with us, and, uh, to hear our questions, answer them, um, and our concerns regarding, uh, the legislation, and thank you for what you do up in Concord.
Thank you, Chairman Arteya, we will all miss your leadership. I do want to say that, uh, we are fully accessible. I, I would say Mirbeck's well-represented on education, we have two members from, but seriously, if you have any questions or concerns or legislation that you want to put in, uh, you know, it, it, just go to the website, look up your legislator, you'll find our, our mugs there, and, uh, please, keep in contact with us.
Wonderful, thank you.
Good evening.
Good evening. And we're so sorry the dog needs to leave. And you too, Lynn. Good night. Thank you. And that will take us to item number seven, Quarterly Curriculum Review, Dr. Mark McLaughlin.
Thank you very much. So, um, I would start, actually, the, having the high school here tonight was, was great, because it was, uh, oh my. Thank you very much. It's a, uh, it is a great opportunity tonight to have the high school here, because they represent the end of, uh, K- uh, K- Twelve, uh, continuum. And one of the things over the last few years that we've really been trying to promote is the idea that, um, these are all our students, and so even though they, they end at the high school, and the high school is rightly proud of them, Ken Johnson would be the first to admit that they come from a culture, a community, a good community of parents, um, with civic engagement, and, um, school cultures from K right on up. And so, one of the things that we've really tried to do with our curriculum efforts over the last, um, few years, is to try to create structures whereby that collaboration actually has traction. So whereas in the past, we'd have maybe, uh, curriculum initiatives that would be isolated, um, you know, you know, K to six and middle and high school, you'll see more and more that those borders are gone. And so I just would offer that as a context for the, this update. So for math, our districts, I think we've said for some time that our focus in Merrimack for, for quite a while was literacy. Not that we didn't attend to all the other curriculum areas, but after the district was named in need of improvement in two thousand and five, it was clear that we had to make choices, and one of the choices was to focus on literacy at the early grades. And so I focus on the word focus because, again, that doesn't mean that efforts weren't always in, in line with, made in the other areas, but the focus. So in the August Academy of two thousand and fourteen was the year that we really began to pivot as a district to a matching focus on math. And that year at our August Academy, we had nationally-renowned scholar Greg Tang, who was a keynote speaker, and he, he launched our district's focus on math. From that point, we developed a K- twelve math committee, and they were charged with developing a three-year math action plan that was designed to do a number of things, most importantly, to provide research to the leadership team about our elementary math programming and its relationship to middle school and high school. And so this is winding down now the first year of that math action committee. And some of the things that have happened, in no particular order, but I would just tell you that, that committee developed a plan to have a book study, a K- twelve book study, and Mr. Delude, who was here earlier today, was central in, in determining what that book would be. And it's called Strategies for College and Career Ready Mathematics: Implementing the Standards for Mathematical Practice. And the value of that is that that's a book that has a K to five focus, a six to eight focus, and a nine through twelve focus. So it's one book that's very specific to the particular grade and, or grade set. And so for the last year, the team and members of the individual schools who are not on that team have been reading this book. And that has been a, a starting point for them to talk about the eight mathematical practices that are part of the college and career readiness standard, which has everything to do with big ideas, big thinking around math instruction. So it's task and application, and you've heard me say that many, many times, and it's still that. It's math that means task. You've got to do something, and you have to understand what you're doing. And that's really, if I could boil it down, that's what the college and career readiness standards are asking students to do. So that book study then prompted a lot of work on asking questions of, in this, in this year, of, of part of the math action plan, asking sister districts, what are their curriculum programs? What's been their success? What have been their challenges? And so that work has been completed. I'm pleased to tell you that tomorrow, as it happens, at the high school, it's going to be another step in our sort of demolishing the silos of, that, that are sometimes in our business. And the math curriculum team will be joining the high school for the high school's Math Collaboration Day. So all of the high school department will be meeting with the math facilitators from each of the buildings, plus additional teachers. And I'll just tell you, because I think you might be interested to know, what will the agenda be for tomorrow? It's an all-day eight-to-two meeting. Current programs, resources, and teaching format used at each level. Transition, transitions from pre-K to four to upper, upper to middle, middle to high school. How do we prepare the students and staff to transition, transition from one math program resource, resource teaching format to the next? Transitions need to be considered from both ascending and receiving perspectives. Group discussion in reference to the upcoming curriculum revision and what each level thinks are important areas of focus. Group agreement on common vocabulary and notation, and a group weighing in on the desired attributes of any proposed program adoption. And so that's the first time that our district has had kindergarten teachers and high school teachers in a room together talking about these, these kinds of things. So we're very excited about what lies ahead. The goal for next year, next year, pardon me. That's what being thirteen was all about. The goal for next year is to have identified a resource for K to eight and, or resources that we would put in place and, and test them for possible consideration in the following year. So that's our math update. Literacy, I think I'll, I'll leave the high school out for now because I, I'd say that the primary, the primary goal at the high school level has been interdisciplinary courses, and that has been really outstanding. And so the high school English department and the social studies department have been forming tremendous partnerships. And so I feel like the Jan Monahan Cooney has really worked hard to incorporate the literacy standards for college and career-ready in all of the courses that are interdisciplinary courses, and she has really done a very good job of bringing those college and career-ready standards into all the ongoing courses here. The important thing is that there's also been a dialogue between the high school and the middle school and elementary staff about what they're doing down there. So again, we can foster this more or less seamless transition. In K to eight, you remember that we've talked about Collaborative Assessment Project, or CAP, for years and years, and that's been a game changer in Merrimack. What it's done is it's brought data into the fore. It has allowed teachers to understand how to have student information based on assessment in form instruction. It's been, it's been in all ways a, a significant ground, just an earthquake in the way that we do business. However, we've tried to keep an open mind about what are the things that we still need to improve upon. And one of the things that we realize is that right now, teachers have so, so much on their plate. That's fine. They accept it, as they always do, and welcome it. And it's true that they have a lot on their plate when it comes to all the different components that are in, as part of our, that are part of our literacy program. So the question now, and we've called it the shift, is what will be the instructional strategies and approaches that we can encourage and demonstrate for teachers so that they can incorporate all of the components of the literacy initiative, CAP, that have been in place for some time, more efficiently, more effectively, with less redundancy, and, and in a more streamlined way? And that is actually a wonderful place to be right now because we couldn't possibly have that conversation, have had that conversation even three years ago because teachers were still so into the phases of, of compliance with all the components of literacy instruction that they really needed to be kind of, you know, almost checking off, yes, I've done this, yes, we've done that, now I'm going to move on to writing. So the problem that I present is a good problem. It's a sophisticated problem that now teachers are encountering, which is how to take all these and be more effective, more seamless, more efficient. So we have a K to eighteen that have, has begun to work already this year on how do our instructional practices foster lifelong readers? Shifting the focus from teaching the reader, onto teaching the reader rather than teaching the standards. So we have, we have a reader and we have a set of standards. And we have to evolve from, I've done that standard, I've done that standard, I've done that standard, to really focusing on the, the needs of the reader. And not that we haven't been doing that. The question is, how do we continue to do that more and more efficiently? So that's a team that's begun this year, and the implications for that aren't so much about curriculum, but they are about practice and streamlining practice. And so we have a K eighteen, and Jan Monahan Cooney and her department are intimately involved in, in that as, as well. Another ongoing curriculum initiative for this year has been PE and health. And that is also a K- twelve team that meets monthly. And one of the things that's been really exciting about their work is they're focusing on the national standards for physical education, K to twelve, and aligning their work, that, those standards to our practice and doing what we always do, which is, we've kind of made a joke around it, we Merrimackize everything. So we take a national standard and we say, what does it mean for us? So it provides a parameter, but we have to operationalize it here. And so we have used Understanding by Design, UBD, which is really focusing on the big picture, meaning at the end of this year or at the end of this unit, what will be the things that a student will know and be able to do that they didn't know and weren't able to do before? And so that takes a long time because you have national standards and you have that question. And it's way more than saying, we'll do this and then we'll do that. It's how are we going to structure and create it? So that's a lot of dialogue, and I think I've said to you before, when curriculum teams meet, there is a lot of time where it might seem, if you're observing, that not much is going on because there's just a lot of talk. And, you know, we're in a world now where you always want to see product, but sometimes you just have to talk and you have to work it out. And you have to really focus on transitions from the upper, from the elementary schools to the upper, the upper to the middle, the middle to the high school. And that dialogue about, well, what does it mean to have, to be promoting lifelong wellness? What does it mean when we want to try to incorporate cross-curricular content? Like, how can we possibly include a literacy component in our phys ed curriculum? And I think I shared with you some things that have happened over the years, like a phys ed teacher who is teaching critical, or helping to support the Critical Reading Initiative by having students read nutrition labels and to understand the difference between grams and milligrams when it comes to sugar or salt, and, and likewise. So they're, they're applying their critical reading strategies to a health content. So this year, they have completed the locomotor skills units, and they have completed all the Understanding by Design goals for each of the standards that are outlined in the national standards. So they've Merrimackized them. They are currently working on developing, if you remember from our arts curriculum, there are resources that are devoted, suggested for individual units, and they're working on what those resources would be right now. I expect that in the fall, you'll have a first meeting with the team to show you their product to this point. But they have made great progress this year. Relative to the health curriculum, right now, we have a health curriculum technically that starts at the middle school, and they have completed all their understanding by dis, the understanding by design for their units, and are now working with the elementary folks to bring that health curriculum down to the elementary grades. Several weeks ago, when we were talking about substance abuse broadly, we talked about the work that that team has been doing to incorporate substance abuse, among other things that are important, into the elementary curriculum. And one of the things that's very important to share, and I know that you all would agree, I'm sure you would agree, that this is a very delicate issue. And I think you heard Mr. Balcom say today that there is a strong opinion that local control begins in the home. And certainly, when it comes to matters of substance abuse, I think we're treading very sensitive territory when it comes to what people would wish for a school to take responsibility for versus what a family would take responsibility for. So it's no easy thing to have consensus around what would be appropriate. So we've spent a long time talking about information for K to four that cannot be too graphic or too informational, but that's developmentally appropriate. So the focus of our work to date has been considering how anti-drug messages can be worked into teachings about social health. So for instance, one of the things that we're working on is the idea of rules and the necessity of rules. So we talk about our classroom behavior policies, and why is it important to raise your hand rather than just yell out all the time? And why would it might be important to have a, a, you know, a two-inch voice sometimes and then a six-inch voice other times? And so we've been talking about then having that conversation go into laws about drugs and substance abuse, and why might we have those too? And those kinds of things are being worked into our K to four health curriculum. In grades five to eight, the students are learning a bit stronger anti-drug messages in their health classes. It's still important, however, to, and this is, all the research says this, we, we are going to make a mistake if we get too scary or too graphic at that age. It's an impressionable age. So you're really working on reasoning, talking, fostering open conversations. The last thing you want to do in a curriculum or anything around substance use and abuse is to cause people to go inward or to feel overly scared about talking about something that they observe a friend doing, because that's just the exact opposite. So we have to be very, very careful, and have been very careful, about how we would approach that at that very sensitive middle school age. And that's partly why this process takes time, because we have a lot to think about and a lot of research to do. But I'm here to tell you tonight that that's been happening. At nine through twelve, one could assume that students are well-versed in proper decision-making and choices, whether they choose to exercise that or not. You could assume that they have been exposed to those kinds of things. And the answer is no, you can't assume that. We have to be very explicit with nine-through-twelfth graders as well. And again, you have to do so in an environment that's conducive to students really feeling like they can talk and that they will continue to keep an open dialogue with whomever they choose. It might be a friend, it might be a parent, it might be a teacher. And so there's a connection between this work that we're doing and the AOK Campaign for Merrimack Safeguard that I think you'll hear about pretty soon. But anyway, I know that the board, we had discussed with the board that we would talk to you a little bit about some of the work that we've done. I'm not here to tell you tonight that I have anything to show you yet. I'm rather here to tell you that, like every good product, it begins with some good dialogue, and that's what we've been having this year. In addition to that, we have an ongoing science curriculum. I know that you're pretty familiar with that. Bill Morris and his team, pardon me, have presented to you over the period of last several years. I'm pleased to tell you that right now, they are focusing on editing the K to eight document. So you've had exposure to their work over the last several years. They are now at the point where they have a, a close-to-complete K to eight document. Meanwhile, the high school has been working on its competencies and have been doing that in partnership with that science curriculum team. So the work for the remainder of this year and the summer will be making those explicit linkages between the work of the K to eight team and the high school, so that there won't be a drop in transition from the K to eight experience and the high school experience. So we're, right now, we're working on whatever final tweaks need to happen in that K to eight document to make the transition to high school be seamless. It's an overused word, but it's more. So, so I look forward to having that group of folks come to you, probably in the early fall, with, with that as well. In addition, Nancy Rose has been working with the technology educators and the librarians on a comprehensive curriculum. And that has been probably, in, in a good way, one of the most challenging undertakings we've had curriculum-wise because what we're really trying to do is, is bridge two worlds. And they, they're not as different as they might seem. They are, in fact, very aligned, but practices have been. They are in fact very aligned, but practices have been different. And so the work there is, you have the AASL standards, the library standards, and you have the ISTI standards, the technology standards. And so the work of that committee for a long time has been trying to not, you know, have the librarians do this and the technology educators do this and then like celebrate when things collab, you know, connect. But really trying to find those parallels. And that has been, I think, a very interesting and ongoing challenge. I think Mr. Goodman here can speak to some of the time that he's spent working on that. He's been a very big player in that. But I give great credit to Nancy. She has a tremendous vision for practical application. Nobody better than Nancy, I think, to talk about the natural wedding of technology and information services and just how you can reasonably bring those into classroom practice. They, they shouldn't step outside of it and just be a thing you do when you're done everything else. They've got to be integrated. Nancy is just outstanding at visioning that. And so that's been the work of the Curriculum Committee for some time. And I think we'll have more specific information either at the last curriculum overview or at the very beginning of the year with product for that. But this is just an update. And finally, it's not so much curriculum, but it's a significant piece of work that the district is doing around RTI. RTI, as you know, is Response to Intervention or Response to Instruction. And essentially, it's an initiative that says that if we can enhance our, what they call Tier One practices, meaning classroom instruction, if we can just continue to drill down K to twelve on really excellent practice. Research shows, and people always say research shows, but I mean, I could bring a truckload telling you the research that shows that that will have a, an impact on special ed referrals. So there are students who really do need special ed services. And then there are some who don't and are sometimes in special ed because we have not taken full advantage of the opportunities at the tier-one level to just plain teach and reteach and, and, and use those good practices. And so RTI is all about doing that. And one of the critical components there is what we call porous borders. So if Mrs. Barnes is a person who is a special educator but has a particular talent and, and for teaching fluency, for instance, and I'm a student who's not identified. In the past, I couldn't see Mrs. Barnes because I'm not identified and she only teaches special ed. We're now changing that to say if Mrs. Barnes can do it and I'm not identified, Mrs., I should be able to have Mrs. Barnes for a few minutes, a couple of days a week, and that might get me over the hurdle and I never need to be special ed identified. And so that's called porous borders. We're breaking down these walls of, nope, I only teach special ed or I'm just a regular ed teacher. But that's a culture shift that is, you know, it doesn't happen like that. It, it really, we work in it. But I credit John Fabrizio with tremendous leadership on the RTI initiative in our district that really fundamentally is about good teaching and good practice. And that has implications for every curriculum that we're working on in district and will work on into the future. And the last thing I'll say about that is that we now have established two things that are vital to any district-wide RTI initiative. And if you don't have them, you don't have RTI. And that is a district universal team. So we have building-based teams. This is the first year that we've now put a district universal team in place and a district steering committee that drives that group. So now, the goal of the district universal team is to look at data from the array of tools that we have in place now. So STAR three sixty, which you've heard about, Founess and Pennell, I'm drawing a blank tonight, just way more than I can think of at the moment. And the, so building-based RTI teams, look at all that accumulated data and they make decisions both at the grade level and at the student level. And that gets filtered up to the district universal team so that they can see bigger trends. So at the building, I'm just focused on my building and that's very important. But now if that data gets pumped up to a district team, then that team can figure out what they need to be doing, promoting, suggesting to the board about resource needs or curriculum shifts and so on and so forth. So very excited to have, to be able to tell you that we have, this is the first year where that's in place and tremendous progress has been made there already. So a rather brief, it doesn't really capture all the work that's been happening, but hopefully it gives you just an idea of some of the dimensions of the curriculum initiatives that have been happening in Meramec since we last spoke.
So thank you for that. I, I know you haven't been feeling well. And so to hop up and speak for half an hour and go through that marathon, I, I appreciate it. I could tell you were having some difficulty, but you got your message across. Mr. Schneider?
Yeah, I just, I want to echo Chris's thanks because it's this level of feedback that's really helpful to go through. You know, especially, you know, there's things I want more details on, like you talked about the math. So I'm hungry for more, but I know it's not there today and, and stuff. So it's good to get sort of this roadmap of how things are evolving, how there are, there's these parallel streams that are going on and good to get the visibility across. So I just wanted to thank you for that and to keep it up. And, and I know this was a stacked night as far as things that were long. So the next time you do, if you bring people in to, to share a curriculum, let's make sure we try to balance the night so that we can, with fresh minds, be able to give the right level of attention and stuff like that.
That's my fault. I, I just don't want my tenure to end. I figure we'll just have a marathon meeting. Ms. Gualyumi?
I know I've said this when you've done the curriculum updates in the past, and this is a relatively new thing for, for you in this board to get it. But I appreciate it so much, not only for the benefit of the school board, but for the benefit of the community. So I thank you for that, for that update and all the work that goes on that's seemingly behind the scenes that, you know, I'm excited to listen to you tell us all about it. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions, comments? Thank you, Dr. McLaughlin. So that will take us now to item number eight. Board's response to a charge for the Planning and Building Committee. At our last meeting, we discussed in concept, three areas of potential focus for the Planning and Building Committee. And as a follow-up to that draft charge containing those three areas was developed and put into your packets. And so I, what I'd like to do is open this up to the board to see if there are any areas in terms of content, things that are missing, et cetera, that should be added in or changed in any way. Hopefully not wordsmithing, but, but really focused on what the content and intent of the charge is before we move this forward. So Vice Chair Barnes?
I had a couple. On the charge number one, which is regarding field replacement project for artificial turf. And we talked about private contributions and potential sponsorships. One of the bullets is that those districts that accepted sponsorships need to implement specific policies. If the case is, if yes, please include in a separate appendix a copy of the policy if available.
Okay.
Okay?
Yep.
And in charge number three, it's, I, I would call it more of a philosophical question. With all of our district properties, we find that after hours, weekends, summers, that community definitely takes the opportunity to use them. But there's nothing in the charge that talks about, and this is the Ogera assignment. And, you know, do we want to add community use in the times used during school hours and day-after-school hours? We want that broken out especially, I think. But, you know, it's definitely when you're talking about assets via taxpayer money, we want to make sure that we're also keeping the, the community at large in mind with the charge.
Okay. Would that depend on the, how the land is repurposed or
Absolutely.
at all, right? Okay. Okay. So what you're saying then is depending on usage, what hours of operation?
Right. So, but you know, how are they being used? Who's using them? When are they using them?
Currently?
Currently and then proposed. Because I think the one thing we always talked about, and of course it's policy, but, you know, when we talk about these facilities, what kind of community attraction will they be?
Right.
So we need to know what demand outside of school district usage will, will this property potentially have?
Sure. Yep. I get it now. Thank you.
You're welcome.
I'm a little slow. Ms. Gualyumi?
Along the same lines at Parks and Rec, last week, there was a discussion about the basketball courts that are over, I'm going to forget, the, right across is kind of from the library.
MYA.
Yes, thank you. There was a discussion about kind of the, how the basketball courts are on the parking lot. Really not a great safety thing. And maybe basketball court should go to the other side of the MYA building. But I, I guess my point is that when we look at it in part of the charge, I think in what Shannon's saying is that we're looking at a, a community, not just what we need for the schools, but where there's other need or not need based on, based on the community and other organizations.
So change the first bullet besides the schools, the greater, add the greater community as a consideration?
Yes, please. Thank you.
Got it. Mr. Schneider, did you have your hand up?
Yep. There's two things, two that I, that I've thought of. On charge number two, I don't want to restrict their consideration only to the two properties you've identified because I believe that on even existing properties where there's buildings or facilities, there may be options. For example, I talked about, when we were discussing this, that the area between Continental Boulevard and Thornton's Ferry School is an area that could potentially be used for some fields. And it has, it has access, it could come through, through the school side of things. But there may be others. So what I'd like to do is sort of change this. And while you call out the two parcels that are there, I'd like to make the charge be inclusive of any unused property that the school owns, even if there's a building on it already. Because, I mean, we haven't even really looked to see what's near the middle school, what's near. I mean, look how creative it got near the high school to put the, the lower fields down and, you know, started using space years ago that didn't think was usable at some point. So I really like the PVC to think outside the box when it comes to any property that we own to see what's there.
That's great.
Because, because it might not even be a square rectangular field. It might be another softball field that we could repurpose some other field. So, you know, let's let the creative juices flow on that one. And the other one I had gets to, to the third one here. You say, I mean, Shannon touched on it a little bit by talking about other usage that would have different hours in the evenings, you know, different usage depending on what the purpose is. You say here, what needs exist for, for the, the three schools that share that complex? JMU's, Basta Cola, and High School. I want, and then you, the other two are, do the needs overlap existing uses? And is it suitable for the SAU? I'd like to expand the top one to really say, what needs does the district have that this could be more broadly? I mean, you know, for example, we could decide that, you know, to get to Cindy's point about the, a basketball, I mean, there is a basketball court there now. Do we, it's the only place I can think of in town that there's really accessible basketball courts outside. If they were lit in better position, would they be useful? I mean, things like that, you know, and stuff like that.
So change the first bullet, what needs exist within the district and the greater Meramec community for this property?
Exactly.
Okay.
Thanks.
Yep.
Okay.
Well said.
Yep.
Vice Chair Barnes?
Sorry, the one thing I forgot to mention for items two and three because of the longevity of, of the project. I think we want to get some kind of quarterly updates. They can come to visit us and do we need to put that in the charge or just invite them to a meeting? Might be, you know, good to set expectations in the charges so that way they can kind of compile data and prepare for it. But I think that'd be a good idea.
Okay. Great. Mr. Powell?
Thank you. I, I hear what everyone's saying on charge number three, but I think our primary responsibility should be to the needs of the district before the needs of the town. And if, if the needs of the district overlap or the town can come of use of it, that's fine. But I, I think we need to be clear that we're not looking at giving primarily a town. I, I'm trying to, to word this. I, I, I know what I'm trying to say and I know everyone knows what I'm trying to say, but I'm, I'm not trying to sound selfish here is, is what it comes down to. Is, you know, Monday through Friday, 180 days a year, what does the district need? Outside of that, if the town benefits from it, that's great. But I don't think we need to be in the position of looking at primarily that. I think it needs to be the other way around. So I just, I want to make sure that's clear. The other thing about that property, and, and I know this is out in the future, but there needs to be some determination at some point about the skateboard park and the ice skating rink. The adjuster, insurance adjuster in me screams when I think of the liability of that. And that's not something that I think the district needs to be taking on. So I don't know if it would be appropriate at this level for the PB and C to look at options of where that needs to go away or if they decide, hey, this is why we should keep it and come up with a valid argument of that or if that's more at our level.
So I can, I can tell you my position and as we were talking about this charge, why I suggested this component of, of the charge, that the decision, I believe, is the board's decision to make at some point in the future as to what the disposition of the property will be and what will be there. The charge is helping the board to inform that decision by looking at the property, determining what the district's needs are. And if those needs benefit the community, all the better, to your point. But ultimately, deciding then, what will then happen, right? What do we want that property to be as a district when the lease expires? It's then the town, if they want to continue an ice skating rink and a skate park, to determine where best to do that after the board has decided what the disposition is. But to inform the decision of the board and to know what options and choices the board has for best uses of the property is to send planning and building off to kind of look at that and report back.
So if I understand you correctly, this is, this is them coming to us with recommendations of what to do with it on July first of whatever year it is.
Two thousand and eighteen, yeah.
Okay. All right. Perfect. Thank you.
Sure. Any other amendments? So if, does it make sense if the document is amended with the feedback that's been provided that the charge get put on the consent agenda for the next meeting?
I'm trying to remember how we've done this in the past because it's been so long since we gave them a charge. Do, do we invite the chair to come and then we present them or?
It has been a while since we gave them a charge.
I can't remember how we did it.
I'll ask the superintendent.
It's been done both ways. I would say, having looked at the charge that was given to the committee prior to, it probably was less complex because it was more around one topic. This has really got three separate topics. So I would say probably it would be good for you to, to pass it with your amendments and then have a time for explanation. Because you really don't want to start on doing it. You, you've got a vision of what you want done. And so I think it would be better for you to share the vision after you pass it and then let them come back and ask you for clarification or modification. Because you, you know, you've been talking about this for a period of time and now it's formulated. So I think it would be great if you did it. And then perhaps I would recommend maybe looking at next time to pass it and then have them come in May or, or you want them next time?
I mean, can't we combine?
My only reason is we're going to be reorganizing and so on, so I'm just.
Well, I think they need to have time to review. Well, I think they need to have time to review it, to come back and ask questions.
Well, but, my opinion, okay, this is me, just one person.
Oh, and the liaison too.
And the liaison, but.
Minor detail.
Yeah, minor detail. My preference is, is that we, uh, because my conversations with certain planning and building, they, I don't think they've been watching. What we're talking about here, right? So my suggestion is, is if we can put it on consent and have an agenda item at that meeting, even though we're reorganizing. To talk through these so that they understand the context, then they can bring it back to the planning and building committee meeting. And then, and then be able to ask questions back. I know that as a rep, I could go and explain it to them, do the charge and stuff, but. I'd prefer to have the, the board represent their views in the discussion, that's just my view.
Vice Chair Barnes.
Um, I understand what you're saying, I'm ninety percent on board, it's at ten percent where if it gets pulled off consent, do we still put them on the agenda? For more.
I think that's a, a minor.
Well, we, I think we pull stuff off consent on short, because we only get our agenda Thursday or Friday, so I'm trying to be courteous.
But we could still talk about it, even if we don't have this formal charge to give them some of the background for it.
Could talk about the intent of the charge.
Yeah, the intent behind it.
Okay.
That could be the backup plan, but, but I think the quicker we get them on board with what we're thinking. Then they can make better use of their time, because right now they're sort of spinning, they're waiting for the charge.
Right. And that's if we get our packet on a Friday, that's my concern, and then on Monday we tell them, you know. We still have more to talk about, so, I just want to be courteous.
And, and I think the other consideration, um, is just the length of the agenda, right? So more than likely you'll have another, um, student presentation, uh, school presentation. Um, and I know that the, you know, the drawer of a, agenda items, right, that gets managed week to week or month to month. Um, is there as well, so that's something else to consider, but certainly, um. I, I don't have a dog in the hunt, so I, I'm just offering guidance.
I think our, I think our first meeting in May would, would be sufficient to, to schedule that.
Any other comments? Thank you. Okay, seeing none, so we will make, uh, those amendments and, uh, put this on consent and I will. Um, leave it to, um, others to determine the next agenda, believe it or not. Item number nine, uh, report on school statewide telephony emergency preparedness project or step. Business administrator, Mr. Chevanel.
Thank you. Um, you have in your packet a report from the state of New Hampshire Emergency Management Planning Division. About the, um, telephony emergency preparedness, um, survey project that they, uh, they undertook. Uh, basically what they want to ensure is that when an emergency phone call is made via nine one one. Is that it is, um, shows the proper location of the facility. They also are offering us guidance as far as to put that location down to a floor or a, perhaps a classroom within a building. Um, perhaps around six to eight months before this report came out, we were trying to. Get information from the state of New Hampshire as far as guidance goes, as far as this is concerned. Because this deals with tel- with, uh, telephony, a lot of the state, uh, technology coordinators. Were looking for, not state, but local technology coordinators were looking for information as far as guidance comes out, guidance. Uh, this report, um, then came out and began to offer us, off some guidance and therefore we started a conversation with them. Uh, we, we should be fully compliant and working with our contracted service provider who manages our voice over I P system. Uh, probably by around the end of the summer with this, so we feel we can, uh, tackle this and come into full compliance and give them what they're. They're looking for and, uh, meet the requirements of the, uh, standard. So basically that's all I have to report.
Thank you, Matt. Are there any questions from the board? I'll start with Andy.
Um, how does this overlap with the COP nine one one stuff? I mean, I know.
It's not at all.
It's, it's completely separate, so COP one, it's, it's the online scenario with COP nine one one and with this, it's all. Telephony in terms of like what the operator sees when the nine one one call comes in.
Absolutely.
Okay.
Correct.
Davis?
Thank you. Is there a reason why just the central buildings were tested and not the outline buildings?
Uh, written, I, um, got information that Reed's Ferry was tested, Thornton's Ferry was tested, all the, they were all tested.
Oh, so can we assume that they were compliant, or?
They were compliant as far as they displayed the correct address of the facilities.
Okay.
The only issue was the thirty-eight versus thirty-six McKell Wayne Street and the maintenance facility, et cetera, et cetera. But that, that's just the tip of the iceberg, what they really want to do is they want to. When you get a phone call from Thornton's Ferry School, they just don't want it to say Thornton's Ferry School, they would ideally like to say. You know, either that or Thornton's Ferry School Room Thirty-Six, perhaps. Either that or by a fire zone or something like that, however, we have the fire alarms mapped out on the, uh. On the panel, which the fire department has copies of the maps of the school, so they, if they knew it was like. G section, first floor, near Boiler, that's the way it would display.
No, I, I totally understand the, the premise and I think it's great, um, I was just curious why the other buildings didn't show up, so.
Yeah, no, they did show up and they displayed the basic information.
Okay.
But then we were looking for, well, okay, they just, they displayed the basic information, what more do you really want from this? And that's the guidance we were seeking, and so now that we kind of have a better idea of what they're looking for. Then over the summertime, we'll work on, uh, taking care of that and, uh, with the VoIP system, uh. You know, you can get in there and kind of drill down and make it what you want, as opposed to regular pots line, plain old telephone service line.
Perfect.
Uh, so this would be, uh, something we'll be working on in the summertime.
Perfect, thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Thank you, Vice Chair Barnes. Okay, seeing none, we will move on to item number ten, board's responses to change the title of the business administrator, Superintendent Chaffrey.
Thank you, so I raised this topic up, um, to on March twenty-first and, um, suggested that based on, um, Matt's. Um, sixteen years of, of service to the district and his performance in those years, as well as the fact that he is, um, seeking a master's of. Um, education degree, which we'll have completed this year, I asked you to, um, consider changing his title. Um, to an assistant superintendent, and at the time I offered assistant superintendent for finance. And I think the board began to look at all the facets of his position and thought that perhaps, um, another title. Might be appro- more appropriate, so Matt and I, um, have conferred and we think, um, assistant superintendent. Uh, for business is probably a more inclusive term, um, and so I would put that before you for your consideration.
Mr. Powell.
I agree and I appreciate, for myself, I appreciate you taking our, um, suggestions under advisement and, and coming up with this, I think, um. You know, we spoke at, we spoke about it at infinite item, that it, that's definitely warranted. Um, so if I'm reading this right, you would like us to, to act on this tonight and not have it as consent, so I will move. That we, um, change Mr. Chevanel's title to assistant superintendent of business and. I'm done. I was about to say something else and.
Seconded, uh, promptly, uh, and competitively, uh, by Vice Chair Barnes, uh, discussion.
I just wanted to add my congratulations to that, but I figured I'd wait until I got a second on it, so, um, congratulations.
Any further discussion? Ms. Gualyumi.
Just to thank you for all that you do for the district and for the community.
Well, thank you, if I can kind of wax eloquently here for a little bit, it's been sixteen years, um. It has been, uh, a definite journey, a learning experience, there have been highs, there have been lows, there's been, um, excitement. Uh, there's been some drudgery involved, but I'll, I'll tell you, I wouldn't have traded it for the world and I appreciate it and I appreciate what you've done for me this evening, thank you.
Well, we haven't done it yet, there's a motion on the table.
You are about to perhaps consider, please, this evening.
You, you took a risk, you realize that, don't you?
Now that we see how big your head has gotten.
Mr. Schneider, you had your hand up? Oh, that's all you wanted to say? Um, I, I would just echo, uh, what the board has said and, um, you know, based on, um. What you do and how long you've been doing it, um, I believe this title change is overdue. Um, you've been doing the role of an assistant superintendent of business for quite some time. So with that said, we will put the motion to a vote, um, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye, opposed, none, the motion carries five zero zero, now we can say, congratulations.
Thank you very much.
Give us cards to print.
Um, I don't know if the student rep has an opinion, but I, I will ask.
I'm in favor.
Wonderful, thank you. And that will take us now to item, oh, Ms. Gualyumi.
Our student rep says he always has an opinion.
I should have known, yeah. And that's what we like about him. Um, that will take us to item number eleven, actual health insurance rate for two thousand sixteen, two thousand seventeen. I will turn to assistant superintendent of business, Mr. Matt Chevanel.
Thank you, uh, thank you very much, I perhaps should have done this before you voted on my title change, it might have made things a little bit easier. The, uh. Um, you know that, uh, when we build our budget, we build it off the guaranteed maximum rate increase, which is given to us in the late fall and that's what we usually put in. And, uh, more often than not lately, that's what we've been getting for a rate, but every once in a while, uh, there is a pleasant surprise. We have budgeted for around a twelve point three percent increase as the guaranteed maximum rate is, you're well aware. And, uh, we actually received a four point eight percent actual increase, yes, you hear me correctly, Mr. Powell. So that means a savings of around a hundred and eighty-two thousand eight hundred and forty-three, uh, dollars in the operating budget. So that'll be, uh, something that will, if the mix of people stays the same as they are today for next year. That's what we would be anticipating the surplus, now that can change depending upon how many singles we add or two persons we add or families we add or subtract. Depending upon staff turnover, but that's what we're looking for, looking at right now, so that's very good news from my standpoint.
There are lots of comments, uh, Ms. Gualyumi.
If there was a bell, I'd ring it. That's very great news, thank you so much.
Agreed. Any other comment? Mr. Powell.
Not to look a gift horse too deeply in the mouth, but how were they so off?
Well, what they, what they do is they'll, they'll, when they do the rate setting, the guarantee maximum rate setting, they look at probably like an eighteen months. Period, experience period, and once they get closer, uh, to the actual, they'll drop off like the first. Beginning five months of that rate and see what the follow-through is into the next year. And when they do that, sometimes, you know, if you had some bad experience or some, you know, claims. In, in the first part of the year, those would have a tendency to drop off because those are now retired. So when they go forward and look at the guaranteed maximum, those are gone, now they look ahead new to see what the, the runoff would be as far as future claims go. And when they do their actuarial, act- actuarial calculations, hence the change. So we had some higher claims upfront that when they did, they dropped off, you know. It's kind of like sometimes workers comp, they do, you usually do like a three-year running average, now the trust does like eighteen months.
Okay.
Okay.
Again, I have to express my displeasure of, of insurance companies, so.
Yes, you do, thank you.
Any other comment? Seeing none, we'll move to other correspondence, is there cor- cor- correspondence to come before the board? Uh, Mr. Schneider, you had your hand up?
So you're pointing up at the sky. Um, I, I had one correspondence from a, um, a, um, a person in the district who asked about the process for facility naming. So pointing him to the policy and, um, and, uh, he actually, planning and building gets it first before we do, so I sort of put the process out, so. You may hear more about this.
Interesting, okay, good. Uh, Vice Chair Barnes.
After eighth grade parent night, I got feedback, um, regarding, um, communication about things like eighth grade parent night and, um, getting the course of studies. Uh, those being such big events for, um, for eighth grade going to ninth grade, that maybe that's something that power school messaging can be used. Um, right away I shared it with the, uh, actually the next night at the cavalcade, I shared it with the, uh, principal of the middle school to maybe, um, consider it for next year.
Great, and, um, I received a piece of correspondence I shared with the board. Uh, from a parent who was asking about the water and water testing. Uh, that was referenced by Mr. Thompson's comments at the, uh, the beginning of our meeting. Any other correspondence? Seeing none, we'll move to comments, any comments? Mr. Schneider.
So, eh, on, on the water topic, things are, things are flying very fast and furious when it comes to that. Um, there's, apparently there's a recent D E S note to St. Cobain that talks about. Um, not only water testing, but also soil and other testing and stuff, so I'm not sure how, and I, I don't know if it's common or new business, but. I think we as a district sort of at some point need to talk about, um, either what will be done in the district wa- at a. Community or level about how we're going to get affected, questions are starting to come, what about the water in the schools, what about the, you know, soil sampling and all that stuff? And I don't want us to be completely over the top, but on the other hand, I like to be reactive and responsive, so. You know, as, as we go forward, we'll have to figure out a way to address it in an open way, so.
Yes, you will. I, I know it's late and, and I'll be brief, uh, I'd like to say just a, a little something, a- and I will keep it brief because of, uh, the late hour. I want to thank you again, uh, for the recognition at the beginning of the meeting and the very generous, uh, gift, I was quite, um. Surprised and, and taken by that. Um, I said it was a pleasure a- and it has been, uh, an absolute pleasure, uh, to serve with all of you. Um, and I mean all of you here. Um, a- and additionally, I, I've actually served with eight other board members, so the four of you here. Um, and four predecessors, Markwell, Thornton, Valenport and Swanger. Um, and I, I've learned a lot, uh, through the process. Um, as I leave, um, you know, there's a lot of things that I'm proud of, um, in terms of the work that we've done. Um, I could go through a list of things related to school's safety, securing the entrances, COP sync nine one one. Um, uh, the, the drills that we conduct in each of the buildings, the ones that we do. Um, uh, obviously those include our first responders in town, the ones that we've done with homeland security. Um, we've done an awful lot there. When I think about, uh, curriculum and rigor, I think the students tonight were perfect examples, uh, of. What we've done in, in terms of bringing things together and making them cohesive, not only from class to class, but grade to grade up and down. Uh, the system, uh, you know, the fact that there were only a handful of A P courses offered when I joined the board. Not that I had anything to do with this, but, um, now there's sixteen, we've got Mandarin as a full-time. Class and, and a full-time teacher at the high school, we've expanded Latin, um, all at student direction, right? Students are craving this and we've, uh, responded. More than that, um, what I'll take away are the student interactions, um, engaging with the product of, of the system. Whether it was chaperoning a trip to China with the students, participating in challenge day. Climbing the jungle gym with, uh, Principal Bell. participating in Challenge Day, climbing the jungle gym with, uh, Principal Bellamare and students at the elementary school, um, actually seeing all this stuff we do at this table, um, uh, personified in the students. Um, so I, I thank the voters, um, and the students, my two constituencies, uh, for the honor of representing them. And that's my comment. And then lastly, you knew I couldn't be short-winded, um, I would urge, uh, voters, uh, to get out and vote, uh, next Tuesday, um, and to support the budget that's been proposed. I know for the first time in a long time, the budget is actually higher than the default budget, um, and that's because of a number of, um, very large capital improvement projects that, that we need to undertake. If you actually look at the budget that this school board worked very hard, um, to, to maintain and, and keep low, relatively low, um, it includes, uh, two staff reductions, something that boards have done consistently over the years that we've had declining enrollment to make sure that we're appropriately staffed and, and not overly so. Um, I think, uh, you know, it might be easy to vote for the default budget, uh, but in reality, the budget that the district needs is the proposed budget. So I urge you to come out and support, uh, support that Warren article. And that, I promise, will be my last comment. So that will take us now to item thirteen, new business. Superintendent.
So I just, um, want to give you a piece of information. Uh, some staff members at Thornton's Ferry School have raised, um, an issue of air quality in the building. Upon being notified of that, we went to an outside company that specializes in air quality and a first step to be taken is to give those persons a survey, which they just completed on Friday, and off of that will come a second step. But I share that with you because that just happened and I wanted you to know it and as I become more informed, I shall so inform you.
Okay. And that will take us to item number fourteen, committee reports. Any committee reports? Mr. Marcus.
Uh, first, just very briefly, I wanted to highlight two things that Mr. Johnson's presentation, I won't say left out because he touched on them, but didn't go into. He mentioned the National History Day competition and two entrants were awarded the National Archives Award for Outstanding Use of Primary Sources, which is on top of the ten placements we had, I believe. Uh, that's another two awards on top of that.
That's great.
And then last meeting, you remember Mrs. Swanger came to talk about how Theater State Festival was coming up and they competed in that last weekend and our group placed fourth in the state, which makes us one of two alternate groups at the regional festival. So if there's a reason that first and second can't attend, then we will potentially fill their place. And one student, sophomore Luke Midlinsky, was awarded best personal performance for the state.
Wow, great.
And then, slightly less briefly, I wanted to include this under committee reports because I like to think that I speak for all of the student body or any of the student body who has cared to look at the school board at all. And I wanted to thank Mr. Ortega for everything that he's done there, his, I was actually personally surprised at how many people came up to me and I'm sure Kim has told you about it as well, because she's generally the go-to for news surrounding your tenure. Uh, how many kids came and asked with disappointment to confirm that you were not running for reelection? So I wanted to stress that everything you do is greatly appreciated by the students as well and you thanked us and I would like to thank you on the record on behalf of the students at Merrimack High School.
Thank you, Mr. Marcus. Any other committee reports? No others? Um, I will just report that, um, I attended, uh, for board member Schneider, a, uh, business meeting at Suresk this past week. Okay, that takes us to item fifteen, public comments on agenda items.
Make it quick. Mike Thompson, ninety-nine drop road. I have a point of order. Can I just make a statement in regards to the statement that was made about my statement from Representative Jack Blackcomb? Okay.
I'll allow it.
Okay. My, my statement just, my statement is, is that, uh, PFCs are man-made chemicals, so therefore they cannot reside in natural water. So just wanted to put that out there. I did want to actually make a st- statement on the, uh, curriculum. Um, I was pleasantly surprised when my son Parker, last week, uh, came to me to talk about PACT, uh, Police and Children Talking Together, I believe is what it's called.
Mm-hmm.
Um, it gave me an opportunity to actually speak to my son about marijuana in this case and I thought it was a, a great opportunity to, for the two of us to talk without me having to bring it up, so just wanted to say I appreciate that. Thank you.
That's great, thank you. Any other public comments? Seeing none, we will close public comments. Uh, we'll take a moment to sign the manifest and I will entertain a motion to enter non-public session per RSA ninety-one hyphen A colon three, Roman numeral two, subsections A, B, and C. Moved by Mr. Powell, seconded by Ms. Gualyumi. Ms. Gualyumi, how do you vote? Mr. Schneider?
In favor.
Mr. Powell?
In favor.
Vice Chair Barnes?
In favor.
And the chair votes in favor. The motion carries five-zero-zero. Thank you, everyone. Good night.